I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. Item number three is our participation. So if there is an item you wish to speak that is on the agenda, please fill out a form with the city secretary, one of these. Also, if I call a public hearing, and that is open, once we call a public hearing, you don't have to fill out a form. When I call for feedback, you may approach the dais. So there's two ways to join the meeting tonight. Item number four is the consent agenda. A is action regarding minutes of March 1st. B is action regarding building improvement grant with Farmers Insurance. C is action regarding award contract 2022 annual mowing. D is action regarding approval of preliminary plat for Hardwick 21.095 acres. E is action regarding approval of final plat for Hardwick 21.095 acres. F is action regarding appointment of Lee Howes Police Reserve Officer. I've had a request to pull items C, D, and E. So I will entertain a motion for A, B, and F.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve the consent agenda A, B, and F as presented.
I'll second.
Mr. Beasley, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Excellent. Let the record reflect, we do have a quorum this evening, full house. Thank y'all for coming. Item C, action regarding award of mowing contract for 2022. For that, Rick Trice.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This is a contract that we award every two years. This year, we've, we used, I guess, Brightview Landscaping last year in, and, I'm sorry, the other way around, Yellowstone Landscaping last year, and this award contract we're recommending that goes to, to Brightview. Brightview has quite a resume. They do big work. They have a lot of capabilities. So in fact, they're still their company and also under our budget amount for mowing. So if you got any questions specifically, I'll try to answer those.
Council questions for Rick. Does any of you have a question?
I have a question. I just have one question. Last year, I think when we discussed this, we said that we couldn't hire part-time employees to do full-time work for the mowing or whatever, that it wasn't beneficial or whatever. I'm not against it, I'm just asking the question, why can't we do it for like the pool or something else and we can't do it for that? I'm just asking the question.
For the pool? We'll say that the mowing contract doesn't hit 100% of city right away in owned property. So there are areas that city staff is better geared, and one of those is drainage channels. There's specialized equipment that we have, a boom that can lower along the side slope of a channel to mow those and clear those, that, you know, we don't ask of our contractors. There are other areas where you need to, you know, you need to be responsive in a short term. So, you know, we have capability to do mowing, but, but not to this level. And it would be, you know, we prepared a memo last time that we awarded the contract just to talk about some of the justification for not going into the mowing business. It's just, you have to staff up, and then you have to cycle down, and it's tough to even feel, keep our full-time positions filled, much less try to gear up and be behind the curve basically when the growing season starts. So, like I say, there are some areas that we respond to, like the landscaping around City Hall. We, our staff regularly, if it, if it needs attention or some manicuring, you know, we respond to those sorts of things, but, but not, not the large-scale work.
So if I understand correct, what you're saying is, there's nothing stopping us from hiring either seasonal workers or part-time workers to do this work, other than, I'm assuming there's an economical reason why.
You know, contractors are in the business and they do it on a daily basis and they're good at it. I mean, it's just, you're gonna hire seasonal workers probably out of high school or in college that, you know, they're, they're just not used to that sort of production that we get out of a contractor like this. And plus, there's the liability. I mean, we have a park named after a city employee that died mowing city property. I mean, it's a dangerous work. And so, you know, we don't carry that liability and the liability associated with a death or injury on the job. Contractor has to be insured, so he carries that liability. So there's just, there's a myriad of reasons why, you know, we would prefer to contract that out.
Any other questions on C? Yeah, Cindy?
I had a neighbor that did some mowing, and he was wanting to know how this is advertised so he could possibly bid on a job.
They are publicly advertised, just like any project that we have. So, I mean, you just have to monitor.
Where did you go to?
Star telegram and legal notices.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that again?
Star telegram and legal notices, yes.
Because they, I think they were looking on the website or something like that.
I don't know that we have a portal for advertised projects or not on the website. I mean, that's probably something that we should have if we don't have it, so we can look into that, make sure that we have it, yes.
What's the timeframe to start bidding on those jobs?
This time of year. I mean, so, you know, we're looking at March timeframe. So we opened bids, I guess, a couple of weeks ago on this project, and so that means we advertise probably late February.
Late Feb, okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
So just being nosy here, when is our first mowing?
It's kind of an as-needed basis. I mean, you know, so we, we gear up and mobilize this time of year to be ready for a growing season. Every season's different because you have wet seasons and dry seasons and the growing cycle, you know, sometimes you have to mow weekly, sometimes you really have to mow about every four days, so, you know, to keep up with it. But, so it just, so we just want to be in the blocks and ready for the early growing season.
Oh, Cindy?
Since...
Okay, there, just to respond to Cindy's question, yes, there is a portal on the website that, that talks about when jobs are being advertised for reconstruction, so.
I was gonna ask if we could put one.
I thought there was, but I couldn't.
We have a communications guru now.
It's not something I visit every day, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Any other questions on C? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve item C on the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move that we approve the award contract for 2022 for the annual mowing.
Thank you, Nick. Charlie, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Excellent, thank you, guys. Item D, action regarding approval of preliminary plat for Hardwick. For this, Rick Trice.
Yes, sir. You recall that this past year, or I guess late last year, we, we approved the Villas of Willow Creek PD. This is the next phase of that development, is the planting of the property. So the preliminary plat and the other final plat are the, are the plats required for that project to start its construction on the civil and, of course, required to get building permits on the property. So part of this will be that there will be an abandonment of Westwood, which was agreed to by the neighborhood and the city, that will not allow through movement through the development, which is now known as Hardwick and not Villas of Willow Creek. So there's a name change. The only other change from the PD is they have street names for the private streets that...
Council questions for Rick?
The city manager wanted me to remind you all that as long as the preliminary plat or final plat meets both state statutes and city technical and city's administrative function, all that.
Is your microphone on?
Oh, is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
I just wanted to remind you all that when considering preliminary plats and final plats, if the law's been complied with both at the state law level and with the ordinances of the city, it had, it needs to be passed, because if they, they check the box, it goes through. And I just wanted to remind the council of that.
Right, so once Planning and Zoning Board approves it, it's a, legally, it's done. Our approval is just, as you would say, ministerial.
Correct.
Which means non-legal, or me, define ministerial.
It has to be done.
Thank you. Are council questions on this one?
I got one clarification question that's confusing from the, I don't know if it applies to this or not, but it definitely does this neighborhood. Are the garbage boxes, or you want to call them garbage cans, are there gonna be individual garbage cans at each house, or is it gonna be a huge dumpster style? Because there seems to be some confusion on that backwards and forth, and I distinctly remember they were supposed to be individual garbage cans.
These PDs, including the next one, have an underlying multifamily zoning, so that's why you get a blend of both the residential, which would have individual park pickup, versus dumpsters, which would be, you know, like an apartment complex. And so there's no requirement that the units would have individual garbage pickup. Jerry Syllo's here to maybe respond to the Hardwick specifically.
So can we get that clarification?
He just thought he wasn't gonna have to speak tonight, but...
Good evening. My name is Jerry Syllo. I'm with JBI Partners, 2121 Midway Road in Carrollton, Texas, representing the applicant. If you remember from our presentation, the dump, the trash, they have a concierge service where they will, they will have the trash out and they will have a group of people that go drive by and pick it up.
Okay, so they'll go by and pick the trash up?
Yes.
Okay. It's not a big dumpster, it's individual trash cans.
They're gonna have to have a dumpster to put it in. They'll have to have a dumpster to put it in, won't they?
Or a truck, I guess.
I'm not sure how that portion of it, I presume there will be a...
Well, I know the one out on whatever, Blue Mount and 156 and whatever that road is, they have a big dumpster, but they have individual trash cans, I think that they take to the dumpster and dump it in.
For pickup, I presume it's gonna be a commercial dumpster out there to pick it all up.
Gotcha. Because that was one of the, that was one of the sticking points was not, you know, rental, pretty common, multifamily rental, rental properties versus this, that the citizens specifically stated they did not want the big dumpsters.
I don't know.
So...
We'd have to find that out. I thought that was promised in the discussions with the citizens at Park West. I thought that was agreed to, no dumpsters.
I don't, I don't specifically remember the conversation.
Yeah, I don't. I don't remember that conversation either as, as part of the PD, and it will not be, certainly that's something the council, I guess, can weigh in on, but, but it's not something that's found in the subdivision ordinance or the zoning ordinance on how dumpster service would be, you know, trash service would be provided, so.
It was distinctly talked about. I mean, I can go back and review the meetings if I need to, but I distinctly remember that being talked about. And it just, like I say, I would, I'm sure I'm not the only one, I was under the impression and somebody said, no, that that's what they thought, but then when they talked about later, they said that there was gonna be these big dumpsters at the end of the road, and I'm like, well, that's not, you know, the intent. I expected them to be the same as my neighborhood, individual garbage cans, you go out there, a dump truck comes by, you dump it in, not you go out there, somebody loads it up and then takes it to a big spot and holds it there.
So could you find this out for us?
Yes, sir, I will.
Please?
Yes, sir.
And that's the council's feedback, I think it's very clear, what we expect and what we'd like, so. But yeah, but you're right, Rick, that's not part of the preliminary plat, that is not specifically mentioned on the plating. So, but that is what the council wants, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Other questions before we let this, this guy go? Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Any other questions on, we're on, we're on D, but D and E together.
So, yeah, so the council has invited, has told us the law, so I'm not a lawyer, and I definitely haven't read this contract from a law standpoint. So who, who reports back to us, tells the council whether or not they're abiding by this law? I need to know whether or not, you know, apply, disagreement.
If you're asking it, that question of me, the only thing that is before the council right now regarding that development is consideration of the preliminary plat. It's already made its way through planning and zoning, it came through unanimously, it's just, really, it's a ministerial act that y'all had to follow to approve it. If there are other things that you want to look at with respect to what's going on with the plan development, the development agreement, things like that, we could talk about that offline, and I could get with city manager and the planning director about that.
Okay. I just wanted, again, you brought that up and I didn't, like I say, I'm not a lawyer, so I wanted to make, you know...
I will just say that, that the development agreement only had really two major provisions, that one was the architectural standards, which required the 75% masonry, and then the second was that it would be developed in accordance with the development plan. So unless, there's no, there was no language in the development agreement which binds the developer to have a specific type of garbage service to the unit. So I'll just tell you, it's, it's not covered anywhere in any of the agreements today.
All right, yeah, so for the plat, this is not on the plat, so we truly can't hold them to anything on the plat, but we can request that, and we made the request to this gentleman. So we'd just like a follow-up at some point in the, in the near future, and follow-up through staff, we don't follow up to council, please, we'd appreciate that. And then keep in mind what a plat is and what it isn't, and so it does not include this kind of, as Rick said, that's in the development agreement. So please keep that in mind, plating discussions. Other questions on C or D? No, D and E, sorry. If not, I'll entertain a motion for items D and E.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve items C and D?
D, D and E.
D and E as presented.
Thank you, sir. I'll have a second. Mayor, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Thank you, guys. That's it. All right, item five, presentation of the 2021 Economic Excellence Award from the Texas Economic Development Council. For that, city manager, Gabe Rainey.
Mayor and council, it's always nice to be recognized, so for those in the audience and those watching at home, the city council in 2016 decided that economic development was a focus area and created a strategic plan for economic development. So when I was hired in January of 18, hard to think that four years has flown by, economic development was something that the city council really desired. So we're really happy with some of the progress we've made in a short amount of time in the lifespan of a city for having a new program and new staff at the helm. So happy to be recognized by the Texas Economic Development Council, and I'd like to defer to Keith Reinhardt, who heads up that division, and he can talk a little further.
I plead the fifth. No, it's just an honor to receive that from Texas Economic Development Council, very proud.
So what did we do that they were recognized? What all steps have we taken that they appreciate?
How we operate, the plans that we have in place, we recently won an award from TEDC for our building improvement grant. This award was more specifically for the department as a whole and how we're operating. Professionalism, continuing education, just how the department is set up and operating.
Excellent. That's what this is for. I've got a very nice, nice plaque. You wanna take a picture with Keith?
You're gonna have to.
I know. You wanna do that? It's usually Keith taking the picture, so we'll get Keith in the picture this time.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. One thing I forgot to mention earlier was that out of the 500, 600 cities that have economic development departments, we're one of 57 that received the award, so pretty proud of that.
Congratulations.
That's awesome. Lot of awards this year, great work. Item six, introduction of new police officers. Steve Fragsdale.
We're gonna have to move again, aren't we?
Actually, you're not gonna have to move, because we're gonna have your pictures made with our officers this time. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you, and members of council, allowing me to be here, so it's my honor to introduce to you two of our recent new hires, Dominic Garcia and Trenton Dickens. Mr. Garcia has family that lives here in town and works here in town, and Mr. Trenton, he was born and raised here, his father actually retired from the city. So gentlemen, if I can get you to come up here, right off to my left here, if you'll stand kinda in front of Mr. Beasley there and face back towards me, we'll do the ceremonial swearing in. If you repeat after me, aye, state your name.
Aye.
Dear solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of police officer of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God. If I can get an affirmative response from you. All right, all right, good deal. All right, gentlemen, congratulations and welcome to the Saginaw Police Department family. So they do have family here, what I would like to do is have their families come up with them, stand in front of y'all, y'all approach. Stand.
Keith, you want to stand here, stand in place?
Yes, I want you standing in the background.
Let me get in this picture.
Get everybody, everybody in here.
Act like you like each other, it's okay.
Put them that close together for that moment.
I can have just the front row skewed this way.
Me too. Tell it to the mayor.
You got me right.
Cindy, sorry, you're being watched. And one, two, three, chief.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Welcome to the family.
Glad to have you here in Saginaw. Item number seven, oh, and families, you're welcome to leave, you don't have to stay all night.
Yeah, y'all can... You're more than welcome to stay if you want to.
They don't want to stay.
I know.
I don't want to make them do that.
I know.
Block them in here.
That's right, that's right.
That little guy with cowboy hat needs to go home.
I know, he's dead. He was, he had a piece of candy, he's good.
Oh, he's good for a while?
Yeah, he's good for a minute.
All right.
Item number seven, public hearing at 6:24. We are in a public hearing. Consideration action regarding adoption of resolution 2022-02, 2022 Community Development Block Grant Project New Sidewalk Construction. For that, Director Public Works, Rick Trice.
Thank you, Mayor. You may recall in November of last year, we awarded an individual project order to Kimmy Horn, excuse me, for design of sidewalk on Thompson Road, which is the main spine road that basically runs from Saginaw Elementary all the way to Longhorn. We knew at that time that that project would be leveraged against the CDBG grant opportunity, which happens on a two-year cycle. We missed the last cycle because of COVID, but they're alive and well, and so we have applied to leverage that money against that grant. Part of that process is for you to, to take public hearing for comments from the public that this is the project that we want to do as a city, and I would just say that, and then, of course, pass the resolution endorsing or setting the project. Just some of the numbers for your information, the engineering that was awarded back in November was $85,000 to Kimmy Horn, and at that time, we had a total project cost $475,000, that would be engineering and construction. Engineering includes construction management and all those activities, so a turnkey cost estimated at $475,000. We in grant, we anticipate that this grant will award us about $200,000, so that will be money that will come out from city coffers and be applied from the, from the CDBG, so it's a good way to leverage those funds for that project. Those original funds came from the $1 million in CO for the 2020 CO sales, so this will free up that unused money for additional sidewalk projects in the city. So with that, I entertain a public hearing or public comments, and then if you've got any questions...
Okay, let's take, let's take council questions first and public comment. So council questions for Rick about this project?
Nah, the only thing I got is just a statement. It's, it's very nice to, I'm glad to see this, especially after I asked some questions and found out that this was going from there all the way to the school, because we got a couple of different schools where kids are walking through the grass, trying to get to school, and what ends up happening when it rains, they're walking on the side of the road. We see that over on Blue Mount, actually, significantly. So I'm very happy, at least from a, a safety standpoint, this, this to happen.
I think that if you look at an arriole Saginaw, this is the, the area, the residential area that's south of the, of the elementary school, is probably the only area or neighborhood in Saginaw that has no sidewalk, or virtually no sidewalk. We've, we've had sidewalk projects over the last four or five years that we've installed there, and this is just a continuation of that process. So this will be basically an archerio, if you will, or a collector that will run the length of that neighborhood and, and get people to a sidewalk to and around Saginaw Elementary, so.
I do have one comment. I can say that the sidewalks that they've done look really nice, and people have commented about them, how nice they are. They look really nice.
You do, you know, my experience is that any time that you have a sidewalk or a street improvement in, in an older area, that you see some synergy take place, and people take a lot more pride, and you see people doing home improvements, so, you know, it's an overall, it's a, it's a good thing to revitalize areas like that.
One thing about, keep in mind, the CDBG, I always have trouble with that, that project is only certain parts of town we can use it on. It's based on income and property values and things, so it, there's a limited area. We can't just do anywhere with these grants. I was on the Tarrant County Committee for this a couple of years ago, and it's interesting, not every city has zones, and there's only certain places and certain things you can do. So it's great, we can take advantage of it. I mean, this is free money from the feds. That's $200,000, free money from the feds. If it didn't go to us, it would go to somebody else, so yes, we need to take advantage of it. It's awesome, we get sidewalks for almost 50 cents on the dollar. So it's a good, it's a really great thing. I'm sorry, other council, other questions? Cindy?
What is the timeline on, on this construction?
We have to be awarded the grant at first, and then, of course, it's already, design has started in November. As soon as we get a green light from CDBG, we'll advertise, and we, I would anticipate we'd have sidewalk construction beginning in the summer.
Okay, and about how long do we think that would last? Six months, year, two?
Four, $475,000, or...
I know Opel's a pretty long street.
About a $400,000 project, probably, probably four months or so, four, five months.
Four months, wow.
It's pretty quick. But, you know, the problem with retrofitting a sidewalk in an area like that is it's almost design-built in the field, I mean, you can, you really can't put on paper what you need to do out there, so there's a lot of fitting that goes on during the construction process, so, you know, but, but we should be substantially complete before the next school year starts, we would hope.
Well, I know there's a lot of places...
One thing about, keep in mind, the CDBG, I always have trouble with that, that project is only certain parts of town we can use it on. It's based on income and property values and things, so there's a limited area, we can't just do anywhere with these grants. I was on the Tarrant County Committee for this a couple of years ago, and it's interesting, not every city has zones, and there's only certain places and certain things you can do, so it's great, we can take advantage of it, I mean, this is free money from the feds. That's two hundred thousand dollars, free money from the feds. If it doesn't go to us, it'll go to somebody else, so yes, we need to take advantage of it, and it's awesome, we get sidewalks for almost fifty cents on the dollar. So it's a good, it's a really great thing. I'm sorry, other council, other questions? Cindy?
What is the timeline on this construction?
We have to be awarded the grant at first, and then of course, it's already, design had started in November. As soon as we get a green light from CDBG, we'll advertise, and I would anticipate we'd have sidewalk construction beginning in the summer.
Okay, and about how long do we think that would last? Six months, year, two?
Four hundred and seventy-five thousand, or.
I know Opal's a pretty long street.
About a four hundred thousand dollar project, probably, probably four months or so, four, five months.
Oh, four months, wow.
It's pretty quick. But, you know, the problem with retrofitting a sidewalk in an area like that is it's almost design-built in the field, I mean, you can, you really can't put on paper what you need to do out there, so there's a lot of fitting that goes on during the construction process, so, you know, but but we should be substantially complete before the next school year starts, we would hope.
Well, I know there's a lot of places on Opal Street where the sidewalk drops a good three inches, so it'd be nice to have that repaired. So thank you so much.
Council, other questions? I have no council question, this is a public hearing, so folks in the audience, now's your time to speak, you don't have to fill out a form, you just approach the dice if you would like to speak on this item. So please. Anybody? If not, then at six thirty, I will take us out of a public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to pass the consideration action for the adoption of the resolution twenty-two dash oh-two community development block grant.
Cindy second, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed, great, thanks, guys, thanks, Rick. Item number eight, consideration action regarding a development agreement with Next Metro Communities regarding architectural standards for exterior masonry neighborhood. Several requirements, a land described as probably sixteen point four-three acres of land, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, Blue Mount. Rick Trice.
Thank you, Mayor, this item is in preparation for the following item, which is the PD for a villa. This is, again, because state law prohibits cities from defining or requiring certain architectural building materials, this development agreement will bind that developer to improve, make these improvements with certain standards, which is seventy-five percent masonry, you can see the development standards that are mentioned in the agreement that's attached. In exchange for that, we're going to waive ten thousand dollars in permit fees as consideration in exchange for that, those improvements, so. I will say that the agreement that's attached to your council memo in your packet is not the agreement that will be signed. The agreement that's in your packet is actually to the developer, and because the property has not been conveyed yet, the agreement needs to be both to the developer and the property owner, so that when the PD zoning runs with the land, so that the property owner would be bound to that agreement also in that PD development plan. So if the property conveys, then it will be a moot point, but we do have an agreement that the property owner has executed. It's just not part of the, attached to the memo tonight, so, for your information.
Will you refresh our memory as to the location, I did not do a very good job.
This would be the northwest corner of Saginaw, or Bailey Boswell and FM one fifty-six.
Council questions on this development agreement? Mary, please.
The way I look at it, this was approved because the developer agreed to make these concessions. That is the way it got approved. So I see no reason why the city should feel obligated to forgive any fees that arise.
I think that the issue that was raised on the Villas of Willow Creek was that the city, this was really takes the form, even though it doesn't say, it's an economic development agreement, it's really the only vehicle to get that done, and there has to be consider, real consideration. So just to say, you know, in exchange for a dollar, which a lot of dedication instruments have, it's just a token consideration, and this has to be something that's a little more robust, which is why we have a ten thousand dollar figure that was used, again, the precedent set on Villas, you know, that time. So if you recall that conversation when Brandon kind of briefed you at that evening meeting.
Right, so legally, we have to put some money up.
That's correct.
To make it valid. Larry, would you want to explain that a little better, Larry? So why we have to do that?
Yeah, two years ago, the legislature decided to take exterior material requirements that the city could impose on residential and commercial structures away from the local governments, you couldn't make those requirements anymore. And so what this does is, instead of it being done through ordinance, you're doing it through contract with the developer. And so the developer in this case is, he's saying, I'm going to, whatever it states with the development grant, seventy-five percent masonry is one of the requirements, then the city needs to give something to hint back to him in consideration of that, to be able to make that stick. And so what the city is doing here is, the city is not, you're paying for it by not charging, you'll be charging, you'll be building permit fees after ten thousand dollars. But the first ten thousand will not be charged, and that's gives, what that does, that makes this agreement enforceable, these standards enforceable that were taken away two years ago.
Well, the way I look at it is, any developer can go above and beyond the rules that are required, and if they choose to do so, to make a better development, or in order to get this body to pass that request, to approve that request. I don't think the city has to pay them for, that's what they had to do to get it approved.
I think one of the issues with that approach is that it becomes a quid pro quo, you can't, you can't approve conditional development, you can't say that we'll do this if you do that. I mean, there has to be an agreement in place to bind them to those improvements.
Isn't that what we're doing, we'll relieve you of a ten thousand dollar cost if you do this, that's what we're doing.
In a sense, but again, it's an economic development agreement, so, I mean, that's just, unfortunately, you know, the legislature didn't do us any favors, so this is the way that we have to approach it.
Well, you know, the next item, as you said, is connected to this, and it probably won't surprise most of the people in this audience that I'm not for that, so I won't be for this development agreement.
The one thing I see on this, regardless of the second one there, but I've now had two incidences where I've had people come up here, as I've been on council, and I've only been on here, what, eight months, nine months, where they've actually stated stuff, okay, and then come back later and found out that that was absolutely not the case. And I've actually retched out to our council, say, you know, I guess for better lack of words, they lied to the city. And without something binding, nothing we can do about it. So I like this, just because if it does pass, it's with this ten dollar trade, it's binding, they have to do this. Is that correct, sir?
That's correct, and you've got a binding contract with the developer at that point.
And not that I don't trust, or I think that this group's gonna come up here and say one thing and do another, but I've been twice bitten, so now I'm pretty dag gone shy, and anything going forward, you can bet I'm gonna be looking over at our council, how'd I make this to where, you know, it's good for our citizens?
I'll just say, I mean, I just talked to the developer, and I mean, he said that they were willing to do it for a dollar. It's not, it's not the developer, I mean, they're not, it's not negotiating, it's what we have to do, so that's why.
Yeah, blame the legislator, don't blame the developer, blame the legislature on this for changing the rules on it, so. We were not very happy about that, but this is where we live, and that's the world we're two living right now, so. No, and Nick, you bring up a good point, I mean, I wouldn't be very excited about the development if it was not masonry, at all, not at all, I would not want anything except masonry, so I think that is key to this.
Absolutely.
All right, other questions, we're still on eight, so other questions on eight, yes, Mayor?
And I'll just say one more thing, and then I'll be quiet.
Go ahead.
I believe I'm correct, but if I'm not, let me know, that this development agreement could simply state, we're going to do the masonry, we're going to do these setbacks, period. And would it then not be binding, if that's what the development agreement said, without any mention of any forgiving of any fees? If that, if those fees being forgiven were not even mentioned, would that not be binding, just to have it stated?
Probably not, because what you're looking for is to have consideration that something is given and something is received. And in this case, the city is receiving the benefit of this exterior requirement, developer's not receiving anything back. And, you know, one of the things you have to look at is, you know, they may not be the developer in the future. You want to make sure this is all enforceable at the end of the day.
Okay, well, I'm not an attorney, but I cannot persuade with that argument.
Council, other questions? If no, no, Cindy, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at item B four on Exhibit B. Yes. It says, surface spaces, detached garages, and covered parking shall be allowed and count toward the minimum parking requirements. There's a lot of heartache in this city about not being able to put up carports wide, and I've gotten a few phone calls over this statement why these people are able to have covered parking at this development, but we can't throughout the rest of the city.
You'll recall last year that we approved an amendment to the zoning ordinance that allowed carports on multifamily developments, so that's why they're allowed on this, so I mean, we also allowed them on public facilities, specifically because of the fire department, to have a place for covering their vehicles, including the emergency equipment, so. It is what it is, if you want to lift the carport requirement citywide, you know, or prohibition, then just tell staff, and we'll come back with an ordinance amendment.
I think a lot of the single-family homes would like to be able to add carports to their homes.
I think, again, as we discussed at the time that we amended the zoning ordinance, that the reason, I guess, that there was a zone identified in the ordinance to disallow carports is because of the proliferation of carports and just the aesthetic, diminished aesthetic value of that, you know, appearance in a neighborhood street, so that was a valid reason, I mean, a lot of people, a lot of cities take that approach, and you know, I think it's valid in some areas, so.
But I still think it's the citizens' decision.
It's the council's decision.
Well, they'll bring it to the council, and then we vote on it.
If that's the direction the council wants us to bring, we'll certainly do that.
The thing about this is, these aren't apartments, these are actual houses, it just happened to be owned by one organization, okay, one consortium, which rents them all out. I mean, so if I, to me, I look at it more like, three doors down from me, there's a house, and the person decides to rent it, all of a sudden, they don't get to build a carport, because these are literally little houses.
They are, but the underlying zoning is MF one, so I mean, it's apartments, it's a business venture, I mean, there's not, these are not individually owned, indebted, titled properties, they're one property, one owner.
We have a high percentage of our own houses that are now rent houses.
Excuse me?
We have a high percentage of homes here that are now rent houses.
That is correct.
I thought when we discussed that, that when we said something about apartments, it was like a long, like a parking under. We actually said it was carports on the housing?
Yes, ma'am, it was, well, it wasn't on houses, it was on, you know, multifamily zone.
But I thought it was like, you know, like a, they put the long ones out in front of the apartments.
It was specifically done for the grand, which is under construction now in Belt Mill, so I mean, that was their request, although, you know, it had merit, so I mean, I think it was a reasonable request, and we came forward, and you approved an amendment.
I think they're trying to differentiate between parking, having covered parking on the street and covered parking on your driveway.
Yeah, well, these would be covered parking on your driveway.
The development plan shows, I mean, if you look at the layout, and we can get into that in the next item, but but it's configured, the parking is configured much like an apartment complex, so there will be head-in parking, some areas that will be garaged, and some areas that will be carport, some people, some areas will be open. So they don't have specific, like, the Villas was different in that it had individual home units and individual driveways, so there was no street parking, in fact, we didn't want street parking because we wanted to keep those avenues clear for the fire department, any emergency vehicles, so that's the difference.
So we're going to allow street parking in this development? No? Okay.
There's, again, the development plan will speak for itself, and where parking would be allowed, so it's head-in parking, I think you can see it on the plan.
And I also see that the spacing between the houses is nine foot.
I think.
Metamob between flabs, so what does that give us at the roof line?
If we want to continue this question, I'm fine with it, but it might be best that we dispose of the development agreement and then go into the. Into the.
You're right, we're talking two different things, aren't we?
Yes.
Okay. Let's take the development, we can discuss that on number nine. Is that fair? All right, so eight, we're still developing, any other questions on the specific development agreement itself? No more questions on number eight for development agreement, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we consider the development agreement as with the Next Metro as spelled out.
I'll second.
I'll second, all those in favor, raise your right hand? All those opposed? Motion does not pass, motion fails. That is eight. So item number nine is at six forty-six, we're in a public hearing, consideration regarding a request for development plan and change in zoning, sixteen point four-three acres for H. Robinson Survey, again, the Avila Saginaw. Rick Trice again.
Thank you, Mayor, we've kind of gone into the development plan, but just to kind of give you some background, the underlying owners is Blue Mount Partners Limited Partnership, Next Metro, of course, is the developer. The existing zoning is community commercial, and the proposed zoning is planned development, multifamily one, underlying zoning, so. Just some of the adjacent land uses, you've got Creekwood Residential back to the west of developments, you've got Blue Mount Road, which of course is the city limits for the eastern city limits of Saginaw on the east, and Bailey Boswell on the south. So again, if you look at the development plan, of course, like Villas, this is one large lot, these are not individual lots, so they're individual units on the lot, the density is below eight units per acre. MF one zoning is sixteen units, or eighteen units per acre, excuse me, and so it is light zoning. There is, the development agreement, or the PD will require a nine-foot separation between buildings, again, one hundred and eighteen units and a density of seven point one-eight units per acre. Unfortunately, with the development agreement being denied or not approved, the developer has intent to build the architectural standards that's in the development, into the PD, which is the seventy-five percent masonry, but certainly the city's at risk now for, if he decides, or a future other developer, for reasons we've already.
So he can do it like at twenty-five percent now, right?
He could, he could do whatever he wants to now, so anyway, it is what it is. The applicant does have a presentation, just to kind of show you what their product line looks like, and there was one condition that the Planning and Zoning Commission required, is that we had Creekwood appear at the public hearing at Planning and Zoning, and there was an agreement that they would have a dumpster located away from Creekwood. The development plan that's attached in your packet shows the dumpster closer to Creekwood, that has been revised, and you have a revised plan that was put at the dice, I believe, that shows the new location. It was being left up to staff to approve that location, but we want to go ahead and put that on this on you, so. I think Creekwood, we have a letter from Creekwood supporting the development, the developer has had a lot of things that they've agreed to do for that, for that development, existing development, so I think they're trying to be good neighbors. And with that, I'll, I guess, introduce Josh Eady, unless you have other questions of me, and he can go through a brief PowerPoint.
Yeah, please come on up. Please introduce yourself, sir.
So good evening, Mayor and Council, I am Josh Eady with Next Metro, two-two-two-one, Lakeside Boulevard, Richardson, Texas, seven-five-zero-eight-two. So I mentioned I'm with Next Metro. So, I mentioned I'm with Next Metro. Together with my colleagues, we handle all of the DFW portfolio for Next Metro. All of our product is Avila Homes, Councilman Junkersfield. I believe you referenced a project on Harmon and Blue Mound on the previous item. That's actually our community, and I'll be able to touch on some of those details here.
That is your community?
Yes, sir. It opened in June of, last June or so, so we're into probably, what's that, nine months? We're ninety-six percent occupied, so kind of moved through. We're fully stabilized and that sort of thing. And I have some more details that I can share on that community as well. You'll see here on your screen, we have thirteen projects in the Metroplex. Those are either stabilized and built or under construction. I believe we have four or five now that have moved out of construction and actually have residents calling them home. You'll see here, Villa Fossil Creek is the project I was referencing earlier, which is just to the northeast of the subject property we're talking about now, on the hard corner of Bailey Boswell and Blue Mound. So, all of our homes, all of our communities are the same type of development. They are detached, single-family, four-rent communities. Every unit has four separate walls and a private backyard, save for the one-bedroom homes, which are more of a duplex-style structure. These are all on one lot, as has been mentioned. They are maintained by a professional property management firm. They can never be sold off individually. It's a non-proposition. We're bound by all the same fire codes and building codes you'd have in a traditional multifamily complex because of the underlying zoning. There are some communities that utilize single-family zoning. We are not one of those developers. All of our properties are on multifamily-style zoning. And we have amenities, too. So, we always have a pool and a dog park and a similar type of package across all of our communities. So, a little bit about the residents who live with us. So, we've been around for a little over ten years, and so, in this space, it's quite a long time to iterate on what you're developing and also to survey your residents. So, we know a lot about them. We know that over fifty percent are over the age of forty, about forty percent of those are over the age of fifty, and out of all of our residents, about sixty percent are women, too. We have one-bedroom homes, two-bedroom homes, three-bedroom homes. Our average household income is around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Our average individual income is around a hundred and twenty thousand. Those are often made up of hospitality workers, nurses, firefighters, the list goes on. We build in suburban locations. We don't really build in urban locations. It's a little bit small to read everything up there. We don't have a lot of children. We have a lot of pets, though. We're very popular pet owners because of the private backyards and the dog park. Moving on to this actual site, it's about sixteen acres. We're proposing one hundred and eighteen homes. The site plan is on the next sheet that I'll be able to walk you through. Thirty-six one-bedroom homes, forty-seven two-bedroom homes, and thirty-five three-bedroom homes, all the amenities that I just mentioned, and then the proposed starting rents are here, so fifteen sixty-three, twenty-one sixty-nine, and twenty-four eighty-eight. I can say those are very conservative estimates. Our project down the street, Villa Fossil Creek, as of today, is at seventeen forty-two, two thousand two hundred and twenty-five.
Whoa!
Twenty-six thirty-six.
Wow!
Yes, sir. And so, those are, obviously, we're in an interesting market right now. Homes are very expensive. Rents are very expensive. We get a premium over typical apartment homes because they really look and feel like a single-family home. They are a better fit for a lot of people who are in an apartment, who would like to be in a home, and fifty percent of our residents are actually coming from a single-family home. In this market, those are people who have sold their forever homes, their three-thousand square foot home, don't want to maintain it, but maybe can't buy a home right now, or maybe they want to buy a lake house or a mountain house or see their kids off to college. So, these are all real-world examples of the people who are living with us, one of the benefits of being in the space as long as we have been. So, this is a site plan. As Rick mentioned, this has shifted a little bit. I like to use this one because it really helps you see where the fire lanes are, where the grass spaces, the backyards, and the proposed trees. We don't have a landscaping plan. Usually, at the zoning phase, you don't have a full landscape plan as part of the civil design process, so we will landscape it very heavily. The shaded area there to the north is all flood zones, so we're not proposing any development in the flood zone and that sort of thing. But you'll see here, this is a public fire lane, public fire loops, fire hydrants. All of the homes meet fire minimums, building separations, they're all on hose pole lay. We've worked with, I think, the Assistant Fire Chief, John, really worked with us a lot, John Cook, on making sure that we had good fire and life safety practices on these. So, we're going to sprinkle all of these homes, all of our properties, anyone we build, are all fire sprinkled. I think this is a thirteen-R system. Rick mentioned, one of the conditions for improvement was relocating a dumpster. This is something we agreed to early on in the process, working with Creekwood HOA. You can see here, it's kind of spelled out. Red is where it was, green is where it is. So, we moved that almost two-hundred feet to the northeast, so it's not alongside the shared property line. And a little bit on trash collection while we're on that topic, giving the earlier items. So, we have a valet service, five days a week. So, the residents have a, I think it's a thirteen-gallon kitchen trash can. It goes out front of their door by a certain time at night. Come through the next morning, someone takes that and puts it into their truck vehicle, loads that up, and it leaves the site. It does not go into these dumpsters. These dumpsters are really helpful for maintenance staff, for landscaping, and also during the holidays, people have big bulk items, boxes, those sort of things. They're free to walk down and put it away, don't have to wait for that valet service. So, it's kind of a both approach. The valet service is one of the services that we are offering, really with this product type. It's kind of a lock-and-leave lifestyle. You don't have to mow your grass in your backyard, you don't have to change your light bulbs, you don't have to plunge your toilets if they get stopped up. You call us, we have twenty-four-seven management, they're on call, and trash is another one of those services.
So, hold on. Just so I can make sure. The day-to-day garbage that comes out of the houses will be picked up and taken off premises. The only thing these dumpsters will be used for is for your maintenance staff and stuff, correct?
Your statement is correct, and then not all wholly correct. So, yes, daily household items will be picked up and taken away. The dumpsters are not exclusively not for residents. They are free to use them if they choose to, but that's not what they're designed for, that's not their intended use.
So, how often do you all get those big dumpsters dumped? And then, part two of that question is, what are y'all doing to keep rodents and raccoons and all that stuff out of those dumpsters?
So, the servicing of the dumpsters is seasonal. Around the holidays, you're going to pull those out every single weekend. In the summertime or in the springtime, somewhere where we're not seeing them fill up, that's probably every other week, but we monitor those. If we see something getting close, we'll call and pull it, and most of our, all of our other properties, the property management, that we have onsite maintenance staff that will go and check. You're not going to have an overflowing dumpster scenario. One, you're not going to have the volume to accrue there, and two, it's going to be actively monitored, which kind of segues with your second question with rodents. So, we have landscaping contractors and extermination and rodent and pest contractors. So, they're actively spraying, just like you would around a single-family home. So, all of our homes are sprayed, that enclosure is sprayed. We put a hose bib there so maintenance can spray it down, so it doesn't get really nasty. We found that to be the best solution on these sorts of things. It's about a six-foot-tall structure, twenty-by-twenty square, and they're skinned and bricked with the same materials that go on the home. So, they kind of blend into the rest, and you don't, you're not going to see a cinder block wall like you would just outside of a commercial.
Well, I'm more worried about rodents. If you've ever dealt with raccoons, yeah, a little spray won't bother them none.
Yeah, we haven't had any raccoon or larger issues. I'm told there's some coyotes on this tract of land, which we've agreed to try to catch. Not sure what we're going to do with them, so we might have to reach out to animal control. But hopefully, if we can kind of get all that under control, and lots of times with the construction, that'll kind of scare a lot of things off. So, we'll be mindful of that. Haven't encountered that just yet, but.
You've never messed with raccoons.
I have to get animal control's number for sure. And so, with the preceding item, these are the proposed elevations. You can see they're brick and stone, and they tend to match contemporary housing design. These colors are not final. We generally choose colors and bricks that match the neighboring neighborhood, so they'll kind of blend in. You know, we have varied roof pitches, gables, some of these are craftsman-style homes, a lot of the same features you see on modern built homes today. All of these, I can share, are at least eighty percent masonry. Because of the design of the prior item, we're not bound to have to do that. We intend to, and we're here to work with to see how we can get that to happen. In terms of financial compensation, the ten thousand dollars, we don't need that. That was kind of an offering and a precedent that was set. If we could do a dollar, we would do a dollar. I'm told that because of the precedent, we can't do that. So, if there's another way we can get to the same end result, we're happy to do that. So, in each one, two, and three-bedroom home, we have three iterations on all of our projects. The one just down the street, the Villa Fossil Creek, is not brick and stone. It's majority hardy plank, cementitious fiber cement board. We haven't seen a stark difference in building materials. It's more about aesthetics and matching your surroundings. That neighborhood that supported us over there, they're housed with a mixture of siding and brick and stone, whereas Creekwood is almost all brick.
Are any of these the duplexes?
Yes, sir. The entire top row are duplex. So, that one entryway will have two separate doors and a shared patio. These are our generation two-point-oh elevations. We've just finished the architecture on generation three-point-oh, where those duplexes will have two entry points, distinct patios, and so they're split. Instead of being at the middle, they're on the ends. So, if you live in one half, you're not really sharing a patio with your neighbor. That was a decision we made because a lot of the people who live in these homes personalize them with patio furniture, door decorations, Halloween decorations, and to have their own private space is a big upsell for them. And just a little bit, we didn't, I breezed over it, so the one-bedroom homes, actually, if I back up, I'll give you the square footages. I think it's on this slide. No, it's not on there.
Can you stay on that slide there?
Which one?
No, the other one. That one. So, I had two questions here. One, can you scroll back down? Somebody.
I can't scroll it.
There's a, you show a path going from here. Now, I'm assuming this is a gated community.
Yes, sir, it is.
I think I've read that, right? So, you show a path going from here over to the other area where there's a big tank, right?
There's a pond or small.
Yeah, yeah.
Path around it.
Yeah. Pond tank. So, I definitely, I talked to someone, I don't know if it was you, I don't remember who.
We spoke.
You spoke, okay. Now, untangle my mind as to what you were talking about with assisting our parks and stuff, of building and tying in to our existing trails.
Yes, sir.
And then, our council here, how do we make sure that's binding?
Keith, could you help me with scrolling up? I'm not sure if I know how to do it on this thing. There we go. So, it's cut off a little bit on this plan, but if I go back to this one, you can see it more clearly. So, we are proposing a trail connection. So, our property is gated, and it will have a perimeter fence, so there will be a man gate and a lock there, so that only residents can kind of get in. It's on five access. And so, we'll have a sidewalk that's going downgrade to tie into that, so that circulation around there, and then to the north of that pond is the city of Fort Worth Park. So, because it's floodplain and because at this stage, we haven't gone through civil design, this is all that we can agree will make sense right now from doing work in a floodplain. It's really frowned upon to put any structure in a floodplain, it's going to impede flood study. We actually went down the road and fully studied current conditions and proposed flood conditions to confirm it wouldn't be contributing to flooding conditions along Blue Mound Road and the text dot projects that's there to improve flooding. What we are proposing to do, and that's what we talked about, is we would like to connect that all the way to the corner of Bailey Boswell and Blue Mound, to the light control intersection, so that anyone from the south side, that future development there on the corner to the southwest, and the middle school along Bailey Boswell, could get to that park system without having to walk on anything but a private sidewalk off the road. So, putting it in the floodplain there, because there's grade change, that's going to have a lot longer of a study to understand what your grades are going to be. Usually, you can't put retaining walls and that sort of thing there. So, we're committed to doing that, and we intend to do that. We just haven't been able to have enough time to design it right now, and it takes a lot longer to get to that point. So, we have a letter that I believe is in your packet that I thought detailed that. Let's see. I'm not seeing it in the HOA support letter. They conditioned their support on a number of items, and I thought that was one of them. We'd be happy to condition any sort of approval on doing that item. We fully intend to do that. We have a number of communities where we've actually put in community trails to tie into existing trail systems. At this day and age, coming out of the pandemic, outdoor space is key for a lot of people in their lifestyle, and so that's a value to our residents as well. It's a fairly inconsequential cost to put in that extra sidewalk.
Okay, so it's just.
It's not shown on this plan yet. That would make it onto an engineered site plan, where you have setbacks, and that's one that engineering and city staff would approve. So, you know, if that's something that we can agree to, contingent upon approval, we would be happy to do that. I'm not sure exactly how to do that.
And my next question is, I'm just curious, who owns that floodplain?
We do. We'll have to maintain it.
And I would definitely be interested in what y'all plan to, you know, enhance, what's going to be done with the floodplains. Is it going to be left the way it is?
For the most part, it'll be left the way it is, safe for any dead trees or brush or something that will get cleared out. It's kind of hard also to landscape and to add trees into a floodplain because of the storage condition. Along that property line, we'll be adding trees and landscaping there to buffer our fence line from any sort of sightlines, but for the most part, it will just be mowed grass, maintained.
Thank you. Sorry, Adam.
Sure.
You asked the question, council member, about how to make that happen. Of course, development agreement would be good. But short of that, you could enter into a community facilities agreement, which is basically would be their initiation to put up surety, to build a sidewalk from point A to point B, and then they would build it as part of their civil package or even later, but they would be bound to build that at some point.
Would that have to be a monetary attached to that?
Not on a community facilities agreement. I mean, it would be, you know, their discretion that they want to build it. It's public infrastructure. It's not private building components. It's public infrastructure, so that would be a different sort of agreement. If you didn't want to include it in just a traditional development agreement, it could be a chapter in a development agreement, too.
I mean, if they wasn't scared of the other neighbors, they wouldn't have to have a gated community, and they could just put the walking trail around the edge.
So, the idea behind a gated community is really a sense of security for the residents there, regardless of their neighbors. When we do our resident survey, that's one of the things that makes them feel safe, regardless of location. I'll be the first to tell you that putting a gate in doesn't necessarily, you know, it doesn't, it costs us more money. They break down, and they get hit, and there's always to bypass it, but it's a sense of security. So, we prefer to do it when we can, when we can make stacking requirements work. But just, and to touch on the CFA, we're happy to do that. We've done community facilities agreements on other projects. If there's a way that we can negotiate that with staff, either now or after the fact, we're happy to do that. While we're on here, you can see the fire lane is kind of clearly shown. You'll notice we have, it's kind of going to be hard for you to read, our fire radius, radii, and our width are in excess of design minimums. It's one of the things I worked with the fire department on. They have thirty-foot radius. I believe you have twenty-six-foot fire lanes. All of your parking is head-in, a combination of open carport and garages. You can see the garages or the boxes there. The carports are the spaces with the X's on them, and then the regular spaces are open spaces to the sky, all of which are off-street and out of the fire lane.
So, those carports are not attached to the homes?
No, sir. They're re-standing.
Or the driveways of the homes don't?
Well, we don't have any driveways. We have a fire lane and then off-street parking, so there's separation between all of those. Our minimums, so I think previously, there were some comments on the development plan, our standards, which I actually have a copy of, Exhibit B. So, all of our minimum setbacks and our building separations, those are minimums. So, when we talk about nine feet, that would be eve to eve, eight feet, but that is not the typical condition. That is a minimum. Most of these buildings are further than nine feet apart. Some of them are as far as twenty feet apart, and so that will change and that will vary a little bit. But that is part of Exhibit B and the development standards.
Do any of these homes, and I'll just call them homes in general, do they have any fire suppression in them?
Yes, sir. They have a thirteen-R system.
Well, what I mean is like sprinkler systems?
A thirteen-R is a fire suppression system.
Oh, okay.
Can you explain what a thirteen-R is, because I don't know.
I'm not an engineer.
I bet the chief can.
Yeah.
Thirteen-R, if you wanted to do your private residence, your individual home, you could do a thirteen-D sprinkler system. It's a little lower grade, uses PVC, a little less reporting requirements, and you'll have to cover some of the areas. Thirteen-R covers all the closets, garage areas, all that's a little more robust sprinkler system like you would have in an apartment building, so we're applying that same standard to this facility.
Does it also suppress fires in the attics?
It does not, no.
Okay.
So, the attics are not accessible to residents. The only thing in the attic is air handlers and air distribution. So the attics are not accessible to residents. The only thing in the attic is air handlers and, and air distribution. Our tallest roof is about eighteen feet and our interior ceilings are all ten feet. So you don't have a huge attic area. We do have exhaust fans in the kitchen and that sort of thing. Thankfully, we haven't had any issues with that. In addition to the thirteen R system, I mentioned earlier, we have a public fire loop and fire hydrants. We meet hose polet and all those sorts of things. So I do feel good from a fire and life safety perspective that we're designing above the minimum standards, if that helps in any consolation.
Sir, do you, do you know of any city that requires buildings like this to have a sprinkler system in the attic?
I don't know. These are relatively new to the metroplex. That would be a question better suited for the fire marshal, so I apologize for not being prepared for it. But I doubt very seriously that any of them are sprinklered in the attic being a residential structure.
I was just wondering if there's any cities that do.
I can add that in at least the thirteen locations that we have, none of them have fire sprinklers in the attic. The question hasn't come up. Oftentimes, it's been posited while the fire would likely start where it's controlled and spread to the attic or vice versa and that sort of thing. But I believe we also have horn strobes on some of these too to help with alerting and that sort of thing. Here are some pictures of the site amenities. So you'll see kind of, these are the, the minimum separation as close as they may get. Not typical. Some of our resort style pool and seating areas, we don't have a picture of the dog park on here. The bottom middle picture is a typical backyard minimum, ten feet. On this site plan, our smallest backyards are ten feet deep. The largest are, I think, a little over twenty feet. We like to vary those just because some people don't have value in outdoor space and don't want to pay that premium. Others really want a big yard and to them, the extra premium associated with that yard is freedom for their kids and dogs to play. Although it's usually more of the dogs than the kids. So.
What is the first picture? Show me.
Is that the front? Or what is that?
The top left. So that would be a side yard. So if we go to the site plan, this is easier to see. You can see some of the homes are stacked behind other homes, for example, the western property boundary. So that's what that corridor looks like. There's usually a tree.
Oh, okay, okay.
And so there's building separation there for a sidewalk. We generally have clusters of four to six homes as a, as a whole. We don't connect everything through. A lot of people like to have the privacy. They only want to know one or two neighbors somewhere to you wouldn't have in a single family community. We do have larger open spaces by the pool and on the end caps. This is a smaller site and with a triangle, anyone will tell you it's hard to fit a lot of good stuff in a triangle. It just doesn't lay out that efficiently. So we've tried to incorporate those areas. The dog park to the north where we have the trail connection, that's where we want a lot of our green space access to go. You have a beautiful natural amenity there in the floodplain and we want to accentuate that. And then there to the northwest, that is a existing drainage swale where we're not going to propose to put any structures. We'll probably have to regrade it and re-sod it to make sure we don't have any erosion issues and that sort of thing.
Is that dog park going to be limited to the residents only or will that be open to the community?
It is private.
City as a whole?
It's private. So one of the things I'd like to touch on is the current zoning in place. This is a PD for a zoning change. You have community commercial zoning, which has a max height of a hundred and ten feet. So those development constraints result in the circus tent type of massing. On a site like this, commercial zoning, I don't, I'm not aware of the city having any restrictions upon self-storage or other commercial uses that would be twenty or thirty feet high, let alone a hundred feet. And so that's one of the things that we spoke about when we met with the HOA, is that all of these structures are one-story. There are no two-story structures. The peak roof height is eighteen feet and the site is located below grade from the neighbors. So if you were sitting in your backyard, you'd be hard pressed to see very many roof lines. You might see a couple, but you wouldn't see anything towering over your fence line. So just some closing remarks. You know, we've had some success in these projects because we're able to satisfy what's called the missing middle. The missing middle is middle density housing exists between traditional single-family and multifamily housing. We are nowhere near as dense as traditional multifamily. That's why in some of our developments districts' standards, you'll see some departures from traditional multifamily. In general, we try to be more restrictive. We don't need to build three stories. We don't need to have our buildings spaced out. We try to match the zoning to our product. It is a relatively new product. It doesn't have zoning in place for it today. We feel like we provide balanced zoning for people of all ages and types. We feel like there's a big reduction in what's currently zoned from a traffic generation. We generate about ten percent as much traffic as a commercial use, about a third as much as traditional multifamily. That's due to density and density alone. Generally speaking, we have our peak traffic during morning and afternoon, a rush hour. We don't have any other trips throughout the day that would compare to commercial, which has trip generation all day long. Good tax revenue. I mentioned some of the rents that we're achieving earlier. All of those suffice to say with premium to multifamily. We pay about twice as much tax per square foot as a traditional single-family for sale home with a smaller home. So we feel good about putting back into the bucket and we feel good about, especially with regards to schools. Only about fifteen percent of our residents have school-aged children. Majority of them are empty nesters with mature kids. Majority of them are young families moving to the area for jobs. And then the rest are people who already live in Saginaw, who would have to leave Saginaw if this product type didn't exist. And we've seen the desire for that just down the road in, in our Fort Worth location on Fossil Creek in the success of that project over the short term. And then, of course, the ability to work with Creekwood. So we, we worked, we met with Creekwood back in October. We're able to meet with them to hear their concerns. They had plenty that were, that were able to address just through getting up and talking with them. We met with them at the middle school for about two hours one night. We ended up materializing with the HOA letter of support. We're trying to be good neighbors. If you would carry all of our other, our sites and those neighbors, you'd find similar support letters as well. So that's really the whole presentation. I have some appendix slides for any questions.
Any other questions for this gentleman? Mary?
I have stated before that I'm, my reason for being opposed to the project is that single-family residential, whether it is owner occupied, owner, you know, owner occupied or rental, is not appropriate to be beside a state highway. Two weeks ago, this body unanimously adopted our twenty twenty-two comprehensive plan. And a part of that comprehensive plan is future land use. And of course, as you know, the suggestion was for that to be commercial mixed use. That, that is an appropriate use for that property, possibly neighborhood mixed use. And single-family or industrial would both be bad uses for that property. I have nothing against building the homes for rental at all. If they are placed in an appropriate part of a city and if they are large enough, if the piece of property is large enough where the homes don't have to be packed together like sardines. I happened to see this article just a few days ago in the paper, rental communities. I know it's all the rage. And there's a single-family project underway in Salina. Well, that particular project, I have to put on my glasses. I think it's a hundred and fourteen acres as opposed to the sixteen acres here. Forty, I'm sorry, forty-five acres. And they have a mixture of housing. They're going to have a mixture of housing. Some of these cottages or bungalows or whatever you want to call them for rental. Some townhouses, some actual single-family owner occupied homes. So they have forty-five acres. So they have plenty of room for many wonderful amenities. They're going to have ninety-four townhomes with three-bedroom floor plans with covered back porches as well as twenty-two detached four-bedroom houses. The townhomes and the single-family homes will include two-car attached garages. Amenities include a three thousand square foot clubhouse, a swimming pool, a fitness center, a dog park, a playground, and more than a mile of trails. And I know that can't be done on that piece of property. That's my point. This type of development should be restricted to a larger tract of land placed in an appropriate place, not alongside a state highway heavily traveled. And that, those are my objections. And there's nothing you can do about that. That's just a difference of opinion.
Right. Council, other questions before we let this gentleman go?
Well, I don't know if it's for you or them. So one is, did we have any town halls? I mean, I mean, I know that you talked to the HOA right beside of it, but you've got Halton's, I mean, you've got Highland Station right across the way. And I know that I, in just the last week, I have had several neighbors come up to me and, because you know, it seems like the word's just getting out. And there are some major concerns around there. One is on the Saginaw side. So you've got Saginaw, you've got Fort Worth on the other side. There's very little venue over there. And this is, is one of the last pieces of land there to build. In fact, on the Saginaw side, if you go from there this way in that general area, there's a donut place and a Subway sandwich. Subway, literally. And I want to ask somebody to correct me. There's a pizza place at Mark, Markio's?
Mark's.
Yeah. And, and that's really it. So I can tell you that, and this ain't scientific because I didn't, we'd have a big town hall or I didn't know about it. But every single person this Saturday, and I had a few people weeding through my area this weekend, was absolutely, when they asked about this and, well, a little bit of information again, they, they don't like it. They don't want it. They say we got enough. They, they want basically what our economic development, all of our things is that they, they want something on that side of town they can sit down and eat at, things like that. So that's got me concerned that we haven't done enough, at least letting the citizens in the other, those neighborhoods, you know, at least attempt to have a town hall or something like that, you know, publicize it on the Saginaw rezignage page or whatever and let them, one way or another, speak their mind. I can tell you that the people in Highland Station are still chapped at us. I can say us, but it really was me because I went on council then, that put those apartments in over there and they didn't know nothing about it till they started getting built. They feel they were snookered. And they, they got a pretty bad attitude, especially if you get a few beers in.
Well, what are, what are our options if the, if the land is already zoned for multifamily and all these different things like the apartments? We don't have any options to, to do anything different, do we, can we? I'm talking about the apartments.
Yeah, let, let, let's keep to this, this subject. Keep to this, this item, this subject. So other questions for this gentleman till we let him go sit down? Oh, go ahead.
I'm not sure if it's, I'm pretty sure it's not for you, but about the trash collection services. We have a contract with Waste Connections. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And how does that fit in with their trash collection services?
When developers come on board in the city, they, they contract directly with the trash service. So I mean, that's a, that's a transaction that happens outside city government. Even though we allow them as a, basically a franchise to operate within Saginaw, that, those, those agreements were made between the developer and, and the waste.
Well, again, the reason I'm asking is similar to what council member Lawson brought up is, you know, well, I want to do some renovation on my house, but I have to rent a dumpster from Waste Connection. I can't get a different dumpster and have my trash hauled away. So they're just kind of curious how all of this tied together.
Well, I, I just stated what the requirements are, so.
Well, I understand, but like I said, I was asking on behalf of the questions that I was asked by several citizens.
Well, those, those, those people, at, at some point in time, whether they did it individually or they did it as a develop, as a development neighborhood, contracted with trash services. So I mean, you know, once that's part of that contract is that if they want to use a dumpster, they have to provide it to that company. So.
I understand.
So they're not bound to that same agreement. I mean, they could, they would have the option if they wanted to, to contract directly with trash company, but, but that's not the option that they're choosing.
Yeah, I can just address usually the most price competitive offering is the person or the group who services that neighborhood or that area. And so we end up going with that group. While Rick pointed out, we're free to choose. Usually it's a bidding i- item and so usually the group is active in that area. It's the one who's successful. If there was a concern over one company or another, we'd be happy to use a preferred vendor. I'm not sure if, you know, we can memorialize that or not.
And let me speak to council member Lawson's point about the town hall. I mean, our, our notices are, I mean, they are minimum notices required by law. I mean, we, this basically is the town hall. This is the public hearing for that zoning change that is advertised again in the legal notices of the Star Telegram. And there are state requirements on how that notice takes place. There's another requirement that has us directly notified by mail notices within two hundred feet of the perimeter of, of the, of the development. So I mean, that doesn't get you all the way over to, you know, Highland Station. I, I don't know how to, how to, you know, respond to that process. Would be a process change in the way that we do business to, to somehow put that out there to the entire city to, to comment and what weight that would have. I mean, I think about, you know, we've, we've, we've met the requirements set by the law and, and you know, they had an ongoing dialogue early with Creekwood because the Creekwood is their neighbor here in Saginaw. And so, and they had a productive relationship with Creekwood at the end of the day. I think that the issue of whether or not you allow single-family for rent versus commercial, or I mean, that's kind of a citywide sort of issue. And if you want to, if you want to, I, I don't know how to address that other than to say that, that, I mean, you know, you could consider a moratorium till we get a handle on it. You know, I don't know what that, what that is. Okay, but, 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 you know, so zoning is that they look at their land on a case-by-case basis. And I, I will tell you that even though it's community commercial in the old ultimate land use plan, the new one is mixed-use commu- community, which also includes residential as one of the uses that's in the twenty twenty-two comp plan. So, you know, it doesn't have, it doesn't have restaurants, et cetera, but it does have a park, even though that park is a dog park and it's only restricted to, to residents of the PD. That site has issues with, with access, which is another good reason to, to maybe consider this is that the front edge along one fifty-six will always have that hundred-year floodplain. It's basically the, basically the creek is a little fossil creek which runs right down the boulevard of FM one fifty-six. And if you go out there today, you'll see probably ten to twelve, ten by ten box culverts that are, that are under construction across that roadway. That level of protection that would be provided after that improvement, that drainage improvement is done, is still a two-year protection. It's not anywhere near what the national standard for development is on a, for a hundred-year protection, which is a, which is a very rare flood event. It's still going to flood on a frequent basis. So access from one fifty-six is severely hindered. And of course, a, a commercial development would rely heavily on that access. That's where all the traffic, you know, a lot of traffic on Bailey Boswell too. But, but you basically cut half your access off. The other complication is that Bailey Boswell is a median roadway. And so that will require, and there will be median cuts for this development. But the type of median cuts and storage required to serve a, a commercial development would be inadequate. And also, so basically what you're looking at is a right in, right out. So, you know, to, to, to go westbound on Bailey Boswell from Blue Mountain Road, you, you can enter this development by a right turn. And if you leave it, you're going to have to take a right turn and, and go west. You know, there's really, there's, going east is kind of hindered. And so I, I guess those are, you know, the property, we've had several people interested in commercial development over the years and, and those are the reasons really that, that those projects died. I mean, it was just, it's not a viable site for a lot of commercial development. Not saying there's not anything out there that might work on that site, but I'm just saying we haven't seen it. So.
All right. Other questions for this guy? I want to let you sit down. Other questions before we let him sit down? Anything else, council?
The only other slide that I had in the appendix, I can show you some commercial uses that go on smaller tracts of land. And so these are single-family communities. I don't know if you can zoom in on any one of those pictures, but all of these have commercial zoning that allow for self-storage immediately behind those homes. And that's about a thirty-foot self-storage facility on those two projects. And the bottom picture has a similar one. But that was one of the selling points on this use being low-rise as opposed to a higher, higher height commercial site, a smaller piece of land. So just wanted to provide that for reference.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, sir.
So, Mayor, I, I got two major concerns here that I'm not gonna be able to resolve today. One is, I don't know about floodplains, and I need to go read up on that. I need to get Rick or somebody to educate me on that, okay? Need to do a lot of research. Uh, in order, huh?
Core engineer.
That core engineer, but, we're right, I, I tell you right now, I don't know anything about it, but boy, on this one, it matters, because, uh, I want to understand what can and cannot be done, and then I also want to understand that path through there, it means a lot to me. And then the second thing, I really want the citizens, all the citizens, to be able to understand this. And I know we did it strictly by the law, you absolutely crossed these dotted lines, but it wouldn't hurt to put it out there on the Saginaw residency page, open it up, have a couple of open forums. If nobody shows up, at least we can check a box and say, we literally did everything we can to get it. Uh, I just know that somehow, in the latter part of the week, all of a sudden, some of us started getting lots of calls over this. So, so for that reason, I would really like to see this table for a month to give us time to do that research, and to, uh, give chances for the city to put together a couple of town halls, and the builder or the developer come in and answer those questions, so that I, I, and the rest of the council can get a good feel of what the rest of the citizens around that area.
Nicky, who are we gonna have a town hall meeting with?
Well, we would come there.
What residents are, are you referring to?
Uh, well, a big bunch of them is the ones right around Highland Station, so, cause they go to that area and stuff, and they got nothing to eat. And I just want to make sure they, they've got a voice. Like I say, they've already, they've.
They've already gotten the okay from, and I don't know how you did this. How'd you get the, the, the blessing of an HOA?
We, we, we've actually got a person here that wants to speak, and I think they're from the HOA, so that's, that's on my list, too, before we go too much further.
Somebody wanna speak?
So, yeah, so, I got a request, this is a public hearing, you don't have to request, but I'll let them go first. So, Priska Kirk?
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Um, I'm not a very good public speaker, but anyway. I have, I'm the president of the Creekwood HOA. I've been on the HOA board for over a decade now, and we have seen multiple people interested in that piece of land. The problem with the piece of land is, it's really a weird shape. You can't really access it from Bluemount. So, whomever is interested, once they do some research, and they see the dollar amount it costs for them to create a bridge to access from Bluemount, they're gone. So, now, because it's a floodplain, they have to have some kind of, uh, good access. Now, what this means is that whatever is on that piece of land will go higher. The higher it goes, the worse it is for the homeowners right next to it. And while Creekwood is really big, we have to really consider the people who are right next to the land. And when we originally were approached with the idea of this, our initial thought was, oh, hell no. We don't want that. We don't want to have more apartments, we don't want to have any of that stuff. We like it as it is, and that's how everybody is. You know, it's been really open, it's been free, we liked it the way it, it was, you know, we liked the land around us. Unfortunately, that's, you know, it's gonna go away, things are gonna have to be developed. So, once we started talking with Josh and Next Metro, um, we explained, they explained to us, it's the same as next to Chisholm Ridge. Now, we get along with Chisholm Ridge HOA a lot, we talk to them a lot. And our first question was, Chisholm, how is this developer? Has he followed through with what he promised to do? And the question, and the answer was, yes, he's good people. So, okay, that's good for us. Now, we looked at what they had up there, and we really, really did not like the look of it. We told Josh, we said, absolutely not, it needs to be brick, it needs to be, it needs to be masonry, we want stone brick, we don't want hardy plank right next to us. We don't want to have a gap between our wall and their fence, because it's a fenced-in property. We don't want to have like a three-foot little corridor where people could hide in, where you could have snakes and who knows what, because you can't maintain it, really. So, we have this, had lots of discussions with that. We, um, he promised that they would build into our wall, so it's gonna be a totally connecting wall. It will match how Creekwood looks. He also promised to put trees and, and landscaping in the front, like it is along Creekwood, because we have all those trees and some beds and stuff like that. Uh, it's also gonna be a gated community. Uh, the other issue that we had there immediately was the dumpster. We don't want to have a dumpster close to our property line, clearly. Um, that was not an on-issue, he immediately said, no, that's not a problem, we can fix that. Our biggest concern with keeping it commercial is really that there's gonna be parking, so you're gonna have parking lights. That's gonna be light pollution coming from the top that our homeowners right there will see. Dumpsters will have to be put towards the back. We can't just push them towards Bluemount necessarily, because it's depending on what kind of businesses are, are gonna be in there, and where parking will have to be. There's gonna be noise, there's gonna be, you know, dumpster clearing, there's gonna be deliveries at four in the morning. There's gonna be just a lot of things that we, it may or may not happen. I mean, it's a big question mark. So, for us, as an HOA board, we decided, you know what? This is something we can support. So, what we did is, we sent out a notice to all our residents. We had an open house, like a, you know, an open house where all the residents could go to and ask questions. Out of seven hundred and thirty-seven homes, we had maybe twenty people participate. A lot of them were homeowners who lived right along that area. Um, and there were questions, they answered the questions, we came to resolutions, and we worked it out. And it, for us, this seems to be the best solution for our homeowners who are in that area. So, I think that's pretty much. Yes, that's pretty much it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Appreciate it, ma'am. All right, so this is a public hearing, is open. Anyone to speak, you don't have to fill out a form. If you would like to speak, uh, please approach. Come on, yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Mishke, uh, eighty-one fifty-two Timberfall Trail in Creekwood. And I wanted to say that I'm looking forward to it. I'm all for this. My husband and I are knocking on the age of seventies, so we are looking, we want to stay in a home, but we don't want to maintain it. We don't want to do the outside anymore. We don't want to have to take care, and this is the perfect solution. We can come in, I get to go move back to Saginaw, I used to live in Saginaw, and, uh, it, it's wonderful. We don't want commercial, we don't want the crime that comes with commercial. No matter how hard you try, you can go down the street, you can go to any of these shopping centers, none of them are full. What happens? People come in, and it's only gonna be harder on your police department to maintain this area. With this gated community, your crime rate's lower, because nobody's going to be able to get in and out as much as they do with commercial. We don't want the four AM dumpsters being dumped and cleared, and trash everywhere, and the lights, and who knows? I mean, you've got those, I don't know how, how tall are those thirty-feet light? But we don't want it. We want this community because it's gonna be quiet. They're gonna put the trees up, it's going to be very, yes. Is it close to Bluemount Road? No, not as close as the apartment complex is, because we've got that area that's the flood zones. So, yes, we are looking forward to this, because it is a community, it is a quiet community, and that's what we want. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Still on it? Come on, yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Gaye C. My address is fourteen twenty-five White Ash Street. My property is the seventh house from Bailey Boswell. Uh, now, when I walk out on my deck and my patio, I see an open field, the creek, wildlife, and the pond. I do, I have mixed emotions about this. Do I want it to stay like that? I would like for it to, but I know progress. So, mm, I'm so glad that Josh, when I saw where the dumpster was located, was right behind my fence. So, when I walked out on my deck, I would see the dumpster. I wasn't aware that it was not gonna be the residents that would be dumping things in there at a, all hours. Uh, my question is, what's gonna be able to be put in the dumpster? But I'm thankful that they did move it to the other side. Uh, there is wildlife out there, there is, uh, a pack of seven coyotes that live down in the creek. We hear them all the time. Uh, they have had, uh, deer pinned against the back of our fence at one time. We've seen, uh, raccoons, possums, all kinds of wildlife. So, uh, I do have mixed emotions. All I can say is, if that was your property, what would you like to see when you walk out on your patio and deck? Uh, I have looked at the, uh, complex down Harmon Road and Bluemount, I've gone in and looked at it, they're very nice. Um, as far as the rental, uh, prices, they're very expensive. So, I would think they would have, uh, they have certain criteria for their residences. So, I think the commercial aspect of it, uh, having a retail commercial go in there, and restaurants, or Walmart, or grocery stores, would not be a good thing. Uh, I think that these little, uh, houses would probably be the best thing. Um, so, that's my opinion, and I hope y'all would, um, think about this, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I have a Planet Fitness behind my house. Go figure.
That means you work out all the time, right, Charles?
To be, my wife just got a membership today.
I, I'd expect you to be swole by summer, all right? Okay. All right, anybody else? We're still in a public hearing, anyone else can, can approach and speak? Anybody else would like to? All right. Uh, Council, before I take us out of a public hearing, any other questions that Council has for staff? Yes, ma'am.
Just, just a comment that we're being told that commercial is not viable there. So, if commercial is not viable there, then the property owners have nothing to worry about. And so often, neighborhoods are, they're frightened into accepting something that they don't really want, because they're afraid something worse will come in. And so, we're even being told it's, it's not viable for commercials. So, if that's true, it can be open space. And someday, there will, maybe there will come a, a plan, for example, a small restaurant in some office buildings, like two small office buildings, something like that. Or it may never be developed, because nobody can, you know, find the appropriate thing. Um, if you'll bear with me just a minute, I know I've taken up a lot of time at this meeting, but I did run across another article that was interesting. And it's just an example to show how, when certain properties are being, uh, being advertised as, oh, this can't be developed, you might be surprised how, you know, thinking out of the box, what can happen. And before I read this article, I used to live in a home in another city in Tarrant County. I lived there for twenty-nine years, and there was some vacant property. I actually lived, on the corner, there was a vacant lot, and my house was next to the vacant lot. And the vacant lot then wound around for a portion on the perpendicular street. And one time, someone wanted to build an actual apartment building right there next to my house. And that particular city council said, no, thank goodness. And we kept asking, well, why can't you just build homes there? And we were told, well, that can't be done. This configuration won't support that. You know, and sure enough, before I moved out of there, four or five beautiful homes were built there. And they actually made my property values go up. So, so don't just blindly accept these statements. And so, if, if we're being told that commercial can't be, can't be done, well, if that's true, then the homeowners will have that beautiful, open space to look at. But this was interesting to me. Um, this particular owner of this property, he says, I've been working on this property for five years, and I think I've had the land under contract three times. And he's been trying to find a way to develop, it's only ten acres, it's only ten acres. So, there is a trendy restaurant in the Dallas area, and this is gonna be in Allen, and they're gonna build this nice restaurant and two office buildings in that ten-acre space. And they're actually going to, the restaurant site is sunken from the highway traffic lanes, so you won't get the noise. So, my reason for bringing that up is just to say that you might be surprised what, what can be done. And, and we shouldn't just blindly accept these statements, this can't be done, this can't be done, so therefore, this must be done. And our job up here is not to find a way to develop a piece of property. Our job up here is just to look at each request individually, and determine whether or not that's appropriate for that piece of property. Without regard to, oh, what if this happens, what if this happens? We just need to look at it as, what is being presented? Do we think that's appropriate for that particular piece of property?
I just have one comment, if I could, for, to, to that. I didn't mean to leave the impression that, that commercial development is not viable on that lot. It, anything can happen, like as you say, uh, I'm just saying that that, that lot has challenges that make it unattractive for that sort of development.
All right, Council, any other questions before I take us out of a, out of a public hearing? Oh, yes.
I'm like, uh, Nick, and I guess that's the fallacies of being data people. Uh, I'm glad that we're separated for that reason. Uh, I'm too concerned about the floodplains, knowing the, uh, history of this intersection with floodwaters. Um, we've got people looking at the development, the Levon White properties. And what's gonna happen when they build up this property? What is, the floodwater's gonna do as it drains down toward that area? So, I'm, I'm like Nick, I, I'd like to look at that a little bit more before.
I can respond to that. The, 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 uh, the city, uh, looks at downstream impacts from development to see if there's any impact directly to Fossil Creek. If, if you're familiar with that area, uh, Little Fossil Creek basically, uh, parallels Bluemount Road at that loc- location. But once it hits the Bailey Boswell intersection, it turns back to the east and starts headed toward Fort Worth, and eventually through Haltum City, until it finally reconnects with the Trinity. So, um, uh, anything that happens, uh, good or bad, on this development, with regard to Fossil Creek, or Little Fossil Creek, has zero impact on what happens, uh, on the Levon White track. Those are two separate watersheds, and so they're not, one doesn't impact the other.
I think part of your point is, what, the work on 156 is gonna impact the watershed much more than this project would?
The work on 156 improved the frequency of flooding on, on the Bluemount, or will improve the, the, the frequency, it will lessen the frequency. But it will still be a very frequent flood event. I mean, it will still overtop the road, they raised the roadway, I believe, two feet at that location, and, and it will still overtop on a frequent basis. So, uh, that's a, that's a, as the Creekwood resident mentioned, uh, it would really require a substantial bridge, and, and we really don't want to build another one in Saginaw, but, but, uh, that's a joke.
Amen to that.
Yeah. So, uh, you know, and, and the state, I mean, i- if you, again, if you go out and look at what they're doing, it, it's, it's impressive, but it's, it's not enough. I mean, it's just, it's a big, big flood issue there that won't be solved.
Well, I mean, we still have a lot of flooding problems on Saginaw Boulevard because of what the state did.
That's correct. You know, I, again, cities, i- i- it's part of the requirement to participate in National Flood Insurance Program, you have to adopt a one-hundred-year You have to adopt a 100-year frequency flood protection, which is a flood that happens or gets exceeded 1% of the time. I mean, that's the probability. It's a 1% probability in any given year of being met or exceeded. So that's a 100-year frequency, so that's a very infrequent event, you know? Again, 1% probability. That, that's a two-year protection. I mean, it will be a flood event that will overtop on average more than once a year, as opposed to once every 100 years statistically. So, I mean, that's the difference. And as far as floodplain, you know, the, this development is adjacent to that floodplain. Again, we have floodplain development ordinance in place. Our requirement is to have finished floors and grading two feet above the ultimate floodplain. If you look on the, the development plan, you will see a line, dashed line, which is the ultimate development floodplain. That's a floodplain that's developed when the entire watershed has developed and you have the most amount of discharge that you're going to get off that watershed into that creek. So it's, it's a, it's a conservative value. And, and so their subdivision will meet that standard of being two feet above that ultimate 100-year floodplain elevation. And that's been looked at by Kimley Horn, and they've signed off on that about as far as downstream impacts and also whether or not the development would be protected from flooding. Now, again, what the state's doing and what's going on on Blue Mountain Road is totally unrelated to this development in terms of the impact by this development.
All right, counsel, we've gone through this a lot. So any other questions before I take us out of a public hearing?
I was just going to ask if we could get together with Tech dot, the council, and talk to them and ask questions.
We could. I mean, that's sort of, that's sort of a separate issue, though. But, that's a separate issue, but yes. All right, any other questions, counsel? At, then at 7:52, take us out of a public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, again, I move that this be tabled for one month to allow us to talk to other citizens and to understand the floodplains and stuff.
I'll second that.
I'll second that. All right, all those in favor of tabling for a month? You want to say a month, or do you want to say just until we find this information out? You want, all right, can you restate your motion then, please, sir?
Mike saw. Mayor, I move that we table this until we get a final resolution.
Okay.
And I'll second it again.
Cindy, second. All those in favor of tabling for X amount of time, raise your right hand. All right, all those opposed? Thank you, ma'am. All right, we're tabled. That's item nine. Item 10, consideration regarding resident 2022-07 adopting a fiscal year 2022 work plan. For that, city manager Gabe Ram.
Mayor and counsel, this is the third time I've brought this topic to your attention here for your action. I just have two minor changes that came up since the time we last discussed. Number one would be, we talked with Eagle Mountain Saginaw ISD about a cultural event. They don't have the staff capability to commit to one in 2022. So I believe we should consider a cultural event. It may just be planning for an event in 2023. Or there was an idea that came to have cultural diversity be a focus of the Training Grain Festival, which I think, you know, as you know, many of the people are, if not all the people in here, Training Grain planning is kind of a year-round event. So happy to throw that out there for consideration. Then the only other change would be the, instead of the feral cat pilot program, recommendation was made to, to just make that study the, of a feral cat program. There's a number of considerations for each of these projects. I mean, about any of these projects or all of them will end up being workshop discussion items. And with that, staff recommends approval.
Counsel, any questions on the work plan?
I want to table the work plan just based off of everything that was in this document and this PowerPoint. I think there are some other things that might need to get added.
Okay.
So once we review this.
Do you want to approve the work plan as is and then revise it later? Or what do you think?
Okay, we can do that.
And my point is, we've talked about the work plan several times. I'd love to get it approved now to get something in writing now. It's, it's March, something in writing, and then we can come back and amend it whenever we want.
Yeah, we can do that. Okay.
That's okay. Do you, but any other questions on the details of the work plan before we move forward?
I do.
Yeah. Cindy, go ahead.
At our last council meeting, we had asked Gabe to provide us some details about this, to put together some sort of schedule, when this expected to happen, what the cost was going to be, a little bit of a description. We did request that of him at the last meeting, and I did not see that. I thought perhaps he would have a presentation available for us today. I had also sent a request in to Gabe, adding a couple of items of my own. And I'd like to see those added at the council's direction. First is, we had a Meet the City Employees event when Gabe first hired on. I thought it would be great to repeat that again. And that's probably something that we could add to the Training Grain, if we don't want to keep making more and more events throughout the year. And the second item that I had requested, because I noticed that he did not reply back to the entire council, but just to those that I had put on the email distribution, is when I first came on board, what really helped me a lot in the budget process was that, you know, I'm, like I said, I came in in August, so I don't know what had happened before, but I would like to have that August workshop recap where we get a chance to talk to the directors and find out what they need, or if anything has changed, while we have those little bits of information throughout the year. It's also, it would also help the new council members that may be coming in to catch up with what had been going on. And I think that needs to be a council decision rather than Gabe just like, you know? I can't remember exactly how he stated it in his email, but basically he said, well, we're discussing it throughout the year.
Well, I mean, la- last year, we didn't have that because we discussed it with the council if we needed, and we decided we did not. That was my recollection. And we have had in the past, we've had it lots of times in the past, the budget workshop in August. But we decided last year, since we had started early throughout the year, that we didn't need that. So that was a council decision.
For that year.
For that year, right. A year-by-year basis, sure.
Yes, so Mayor and counsel, thank you for bringing those points up. To your point, I think we can accomplish some of the desires you expressed in the email. So the thought was to have, we did the show and tell in 2018. The reason I know this is, Vicky will attest, I go to the rec center and I, I run during the week, and that's one of my workout shirts, so it's blue, it gets dark blue and I get really sweaty and gross. So Vicky never makes fun of me, thank you for that. We can add in those booths because I think we're all here to inform and educate in some form or fashion to Training Grain, and, and that was my recommendation to you. The other thought was something the mayor just touched on. We do more, I would say, thoughtful discussion about budget planning than maybe any city around. We start six months early, that's by design, so we can talk about these things. The council chose last year to not hold the, the workshop. If y'all want to have the workshop on a Saturday to recap, we can. It's just been our past practice, which, starting tonight, we'll talk about that. So, you know, I'm happy to do whatever you'd like, and.
Could we not do it on the years that we have new members to help them out?
That's, that's y'all's decision.
We can do it on year-by-year basis, really, whatever, whatever we want. I just don't know if that's a, needs to be a work plan level item.
Yeah, I don't see that as a work plan function. I think that that's a decision in June that y'all say, hey, we want to have a recap, and, you know, we'll have a, submit a proposed budget and like we normally do.
Well, again, you know, one of my concerns is that, you know, you've repeatedly said that you dispel information to all the council members, but I noticed that did not go to the entire council.
I, I'm happy, whatever the council as a body tonight would like, I'm here to accommodate.
But I would like to see the work plan tabled until you provide the information that we requested from you at the last meeting.
So again, if that's the pleasure of the council, I'm in a tough spot because I need you to commit to the projects. We can go through again, as we did last time, and sort of talk about the schedule. Happy to do that. It's a little bit of chicken or the egg. Talked about the mayor with, or talked with the mayor about how we report, you know, through the year. I think that we can include summary reports in our monthly reports. You know, some of these projects may not have minute-by-minute or hour-by-hour, day-by-day movement, but happy to update and inform. So, you know, really, you tell us the projects, we'll get you a schedule and go from there. So.
It's really, so this is really step one.
It, it really is, and.
To get this approved officially from the council. Because we've talked about it, but the council's not approved it yet. So until the council approves it, it's really not, we really have not given official guidance to the staff until we approve the plan.
And I would say too, to Councilmember Beasley's point, we can amend things at a later date in the future. I think we need to be realistic in what we can reasonably accomplish through calendar 2022. You know, we, we sure want to do everything that is out there, but there's a reasonableness test, and we can add projects in the future if, if necessary. So, thanks.
All right, counsel, other questions?
So just, can you, what was, the first thing you wanted to have a cultural?
No, I had talked about a, a Meet the City Day.
Oh, a Meet the City.
I think is what we had talked about. That's what we had done Gabe's first year here, and it was highly successful. And, and the citizens loved it. They understood more about where our dollars were going and why those dollars were being used.
Was that in 2018? Is that when we did that?
Yeah, it was. It was in, and probably some folks were here. It was a lot of fun. We had terrible weather, if you remember, it was downpour.
But you could set that up, that wouldn't be hard.
Well, I, I think we can do it, and I think it would make sense to tie that into Training Grain because that's our biggest event of the year.
Have that as part of the, to Meet the City Day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and a lot of the hands-on, so the fire department is there selling corn dogs. I think PD had a booth, is that correct, at Training Grain?
They had a booth, the back of the blue.
Or CPA had a booth. So I see that, I see your request as being very easy to accommodate within the Training Grain Festival, which is our, you know, biggest event of the year.
It's our huge.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so do we want to add that to the work plan, the Meet the City elements of Training Grain? Is that the best way to phrase it?
Training Grain, that would go to Pedro, where's he at? Right there.
Well, but just as, as part of the work plan. I just, do we want to put that, do we want to add that on the work plan tonight and put that as a?
I think we should.
Why not?
Okay. We can, whatever we want.
Being easy.
Yeah, it, it's easily accomplished. So just to be clear, it's, you know, informational, yeah. And we'll report back to you. So I, I will say.
Pedro.
Janice didn't retire yet, hearing about Training Grain, but we, we do have to, everybody loves Training Grain, myself included. We got to be careful about what we can commit. So I think we can workshop and come back to you and say we have X amount of booths and, you know, go from there. But yeah, very easily. Look forward to it.
All right, so this work plan, plus the one that we talked about, approve that tonight and then come back later with some ideas from Mr. Beasley?
Yes.
That good? That makes sense?
Yeah.
You work with that? Any other questions, counsel? If not, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make motion that we approve the work plan as we presented, add in the extras. Gabe wrote them down, or Janice did one, and go forward.
Mr. Charlie second. All those in favor, raise your right hand? All those opposed? Excellent, thank you, guys, thank you, Gabe. Item number 11, workshop discussion regarding aquatic and summer camp hiring and program. For that, Vicky Welder. You're finally up, Vicky. Thanks for being patient with us.
Oh, thanks for letting me sit down for a while.
She's excited, it's okay.
I am excited.
Yes, you have a right to be.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel, for letting me present this. I should have my coworker, Recreation Services Supervisor Jason England, but he's unable to be here tonight. His daughter is ill. I will say, a couple of weeks ago, he babysat the pool as the new plaster had to be filled, and it was his birthday.
Yes.
And he spent that evening well into the wee hours of the morning watching the water to make sure that.
What's his title?
Pardon me?
What was his title?
Recreation Services Supervisor.
So rumor had it, there was an alligator in that pool. Y'all catch it?
We've got ducks and bunnies. It's, it's just a wonderful, wonderful thing. So a lot of good things have happened since I last spoke to you. We've got new doors. If you drive by, they're beautiful blue. We've got the new artwork in the kids' area. The train is going to be arriving back next week, all freshly painted. The plaster is done. Water is in the pool, it's chemically balanced with a current water temperature of 52 degrees. So we're on.
What happened to the heater?
Pardon me?
Didn't we have a heater?
Man, it is cold to be working in that pool. Our hands getting numb right now. So we did have the job fair. So we're on track with the workings of the pool. Pump one is working, that was a relief. Sand filter seems to be okay, maybe a little bit compromised, but we're looking at that. So each step of the way, we knew what we were dealing with. But we've got a lot behind us. What we've got before us is to try to get that staff. We can have the beautiful pool, it's going to look nice, it's going to be gorgeous. But without a staff, they're going to be looking at it from behind the bars because it won't be safe to open. So part of that, what I'm here for is to see if we can get salary increases for our summer camp staff and our pool staff. And these are seasonal jobs. Both of these bring in money. The pool, the summer camp, I'm hoping that we can get an increase from the $120 weekly fee to $150. We have not gone up on that weekly fee, and that puts us right in competition with other week, week-long daycares. We do 5 to 11 is our age. We're open 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We have a staff that we've been approved of in the past of 14 counselors. So one director, and then make an assistant director, that if they're not there, they step in, and then the counselors that take care of the kids. So.
So that'll be 12 counselors?
I would like to see this year a director, a lead one counselor, lead two counselor, and then.
No assistant?
No assistant. The lead two counselor would be the assistant. And who we have in mind for that is a five-year returning counselor. So it's, you get a lot of dedication in this staff.
I have a question real quick. Why would you have a price differentiation between your lead counselors?
Experience.
Okay.
And I think the lead counselor one would be more of a floater to allow the counselors to have a break. To, we, we don't allow them to use cell phones, even to have their cell phones. And for that age group, they just need time to, you know, take a breath and get a break from the kids. So that lead counselor one's job would be to go make sure that all counselors had time away to use their phone. So these are the prices that we're looking at for 2022.
Is that on the screen? Please. It's in our pocket, but I'd like.
Oh, wow.
I think these two should go up right here.
Okay, see on the left, under salaries for the camp, kids are awesome. I've mentioned the weekly fee increase from 120 to 150. I would like to eliminate drop-ins. We went through COVID and post-COVID years with the camp, never being shut down because of COVID, which I think has been a remarkable achievement. But now this year, we don't have as many parents that are working from home. Last year, we wanted to accommodate that of the parents' work schedules. So having drop-in days at $30 a day allowed the parents to choose, you know, one or two days. If we do full weeks, then we guarantee that those who have paid the registration money are going to be there for $150. And it really did cut into what we made to do the $30 drop-in. So by increasing that to no drop-ins at 150, I'd like to see the, we're going to keep the registration fee at $50 until May 1st, then after that, it would go up to $75 per child. I'd like to have a late fee of $10 a day if the payment's not received by Monday at 6:00 p.m.
Have you ever had that late fee?
Uh, no.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
That should be higher, and the reason being is because a lot of people will say, oh, it's just $10. That's not going to hurt me.
Not even $10 a day, you think?
I'd go $25 a day.
How many, how much?
Have you worked in this area?
For a little while.
How much you do?
Mine's 30. And you always get paid by Friday at 6:00 p.m. And your drop-in fees, I mean, if you're, if you're going to just charge 150 a week, you could still do a drop-in day pass for like 50 or 75 dollars, and they'll do it. Some parents get tired of their kids for one day a week. They can, they would pay that 50 or 75 dollars to have them come up there, I'm just telling you. If you have the room, it just depends on if you have the room. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this would be easier if we had, if we knew how many kids were coming each week instead of drop-in days. And I guarantee you, those drop-in days would be aquatic days, so.
They usually are. That's why I said go up, if you're going to do a drop-in, make sure it's way higher than the $30 a day.
I think for this year, I'd like to see no drop-in. I think for this year, I'd like to see no drop-in and see how that goes. Because coming out of COVID for this year is time for us to redefine. I mean, we've had two years to step back. So now we can make some changes that we've not been able to do before and try some things new. Think outside of the box. So we can always go up. But I do appreciate you giving more money on that. All right, so those are the things that I'd like to change just as far as the camp. So we can get those camp packets out. Let the parents know how much it is. We've been getting a lot of calls. And I think the $150 is going to put us right in range with other programs.
And we're going to raise that late fee to 25.
I'd go to 20, 25.
25?
25, 25.
25, why not 30?
You have to make it where they want to pay. And they're not going to want to pay at $10. They'll say, oh, it's just $10, you know? So I can pay that $10, play all weekend.
Yeah, that's how it's getting with attendant fees for the rentals of our building for $100.
There you go. You need to do the same thing.
They walk away, and it's not worth them to clean up the building for $100.
Right. And I like Valerie's idea of having them pay by Friday, you know, 6:00 p.m.
Yeah.
Rather than on Monday.
It's going to help my front desk staff as well, so that we're not trying to process so many payments on Monday as the parents are trying to get to work. We'd like it the week before. And it just, it's going to make it easier on everybody as we take their money. All right, so now we look at the salaries.
Or maybe even 2:00 p.m. on Saturday, or whenever it is that you close on Saturday.
We close at 1:00 p.m. on Saturday.
1:00 p.m. on Saturday, okay. But have them pay before they start.
We could do that. That $25 is going to be a good incentive, that late fee.
That's right.
All right. So now we're at the salary increases for the camp. We looked at pay ranges of 25 mile, 25 mile radius. And instead of saying city to city, because these kids drive, and for kids, they like to drive their car. So we're not in, we're not in competition with cities our size necessarily. It's what's around us. So the 25 mile radius, the counselors average 11 to 1597.
The counselors did?
Counselors. Lead counselor, get this, 1141 to 1597. This is accurate stuff here. And director, $15 to $18. So I, I would like to see the director, 18 to 25. This, our assistant director is taking the director's spot, so we could start at 18. And then give rewards for returning, you know, for coming back. Lead counselor, 14.
That should be 15.
Lead counselor, number two.
I think that should be 15.
That should be 15.
Oh, y'all are doing good with me today. Thank you. 15.
And lead counselor one should be 14, and counselor should go up from 10 to 11 to 13.
Yeah, it actually should be 11 to, yeah.
Counselor should start at 11.
Counselor, I agree. That's a hard-working. Thank you.
Yeah.
Wow. All right. I like those numbers. All right, let's go. The Aquatic Center, I have it.
So, so with this, with this, the numbers we just talked about, you're confident you can get the resources now to run this baby?
I am. I am. Because we're going to open it up for 75 registration. I think we can handle 100, even with the senior center taking up two of the rooms right now. It worked well. Last year was, you know, our test. We have the library that comes and does their summer reading program on Wednesdays. There's a lot of shifting of bodies. And we made it work last year, and I'm pretty confident we can do it again. So if we have the 14 staff, the 14 number, I think we can go up beyond 75. 100 is where I would stop it. But we're going to start at 75 and make sure we have the staff for that. Yes.
Yes, I think these are good ideas. And you may have mentioned this, and I missed it. But do we assume that the fee increases will pay for the salary increases? Or will we still need to have some help with the?
They should. And that's one thing that Jason had worked on so diligently. And he did some numbers. And see if I can get the right information for you. Because he went to 2021.
Vicki, Jason shared those numbers with me, and I just, it's me. So the break-even point at these salaries is 50. And average was 63 last year.
Yes, an average of 63.
They'll more than be able to cover with the $150 fee.
55?
And did you, 50, yes.
Did you say how many kids you were going to put in here, or did I miss it?
75 is what I'm going to start out with. I put registration, but we can raise it up as we see the need and make sure that I've got the staff.
So the minimum is 75. So that's our goal, to get 75, so to say. And we'll top out at 100.
Right. And 63 was our average, but part of that average last year was day passes at $30 and then the weekly fee. So we really couldn't get a real accurate number of an average.
Have you ever had a waiting list? Do you have a waiting list?
We did last year, and we turned people away.
Okay.
Because those day passes had paid a registration, and we never knew when they were going to come. So that's another reason.
Well, you need to set a time on that.
They paid the registration fee, and then they paid the day pass fee?
Yes. Everybody pays.
But on the ones that pay a registration, if they don't show up in two weeks, oops, you need to cut it off and say, nope, sorry. You'll have to re-register if you're going to bring your kids. Because then you're holding that $75 for how long?
Right. We are going to do that for the, the weekly fee, that if we don't hear from you in two weeks, your, your space has been done. So the waiting list, we will be able to.
And how many kids do you normally have on your waiting list?
Uh, last year, we had about 12 or 13. And by the time we were eight, we saw that the day passes were not coming as much. Those parents had counted other, you know.
You may have a little more this year, though, because some daycares aren't taking a lot of school kids.
We have gotten a lot of calls. And I told them that, you know, it was, it was going to go before council and that the packets would be out after that, once we got the approval. I didn't tell them we were raising prices.
Everything else went up. It's okay. Go ahead.
It did. It did. Are we ready to go to the Aquatic Center? All right, let's go to the Aquatic Center. Hang on. Lost my page. Okay, I'll just look at that one. I've got it, this is just my idea to open it up on Monday, May the 30th, because of Boswell's graduation. A lot of our lifeguards are local, so to open it on a Saturday and graduation weekend, I'd like to see it just open on Monday, because in the past opening day, we hit 500 people. It is a full house, and we need a full staff. We can't open it partially. So opening May the 30th, Monday, May the 30th, and going through September 5th, 2022, we'd open seven days a week. Through the first part of August, by mid-August, we always have to go to weekends only, because we lose guards for college. We lose guards for school. So that's the, that's the goal. Pool hours, Sunday through Thursday, 12 to 6:00 p.m., and that's to allow for swim lessons and water aerobics. We're going to allow an hour for the deck to be emptied before it's opened up for the swim lessons or water aerobics. It's just a safety issue.
I do have a question about that. Are y'all going to do in-house swimming lessons, or y'all?
No, we've signed the contract with Off the Deep End, who has done the swim lessons in the past. In the, in the future, that is something definitely that would be a money-making venture for the city to do them.
Okay.
But right, this year, we're, we're going to go with Off the Deep End Aquatics, and they're going to run them. I did get them to take their evening classes off of Friday, so that we can stay open later for the residents. I think after two years of not having that pool open, we need to, you know, we need to give the residents more pool. So if we stay open Friday and Saturday until 8:00 p.m. I don't have pool rentals here, just because right now I have four lifeguards that have applied. Four lifeguards. I don't think that we can do the after-hour rentals. I don't want to commit to that and take people's money. And, and, oh, they're going to have their birthday party at the pool, and then find out that we don't have enough staff to support that. Because safety-wise, that's full lifeguards. You can't just swim at your own risk with the city being liable, and it's on city property. So I don't have after-hour rentals for this year. But this is part of the thing of, you know, changing and growing. This year's great. Next year's better, and going on and forth. We have to start somewhere.
Pre-COVID, how many rentals did we get?
I don't have that number, but I will get it for you. I can get you that number. It was, it was large. And probably in 2018 was more than 2019. I remember in 2019, it went down. I don't know why, but it did. We can rent the pavilion. There's two pavilions that's covered. There's a blue one, and it has nine tables, and the green one has four. I would like just to rent out the four-tabled one and leave those other picnic tables that are covered for the citizens that can be used at any time. If you rent it out, they're off limits. And if we make both of those off limits, we're putting everybody in the sun, except for an umbrella. So again, we're taking away rental money this year. But I think what we want to do is we want people to be able to enjoy the pool. We want people to come and just have a time. That's what I said. Rent out the small pavilion, 12 to 2:30, 3 to 5:30. $40 for residents is my suggestion. $80 for non-residents. I like to do double. That's what we do for renting out the building at the community center. It's 40 and 85. We don't do that at the community, at the recreation center. I'd like that changed someday, but not today.
I have a question. I have a question real quick.
Yes.
Talking about rentals, you're saying rental includes up to 25 guests at the resident rate.
Yes.
If it is a non-resident.
They're still getting 25.
They're still getting?
Yeah. And they're paying $80.
But they will be paying 80.
Huh?
They'll be paying 80 for that.
They would be paying 80 to sit at those four tables for two and a half hours.
Oh, two and a half hours.
And they have 25 people come in for $5. And then number 26, if they're a resident, they get $5. So if I was, if I was renting the pool, I would put all my non-residents as the first 25. And then everybody else is going to get in for $5 anyway.
Wait, wait, wait. I didn't get that. So the $40, the $40 covers the 20, the first 25 people for the party?
No, no. You're going to pay $40, and you're going to have four picnic tables to do whatever you want. If your guests up to 25 can pay $5 to come in. And that's from 2 to 100. If, even if they don't swim, they've got to pay. So I think that's pretty good.
Okay, okay.
We're, you know, we're giving them, come in. But if they've got more than 25, they're going to pay whatever rate they are. We're proposing to add a $10 snack pass, and that's so that they can buy this pass with their credit card at the front gate. We don't take credit cards at the snack shack, and that turned away so many people being able to buy. So if, as they enter, they could buy this snack pass for $10. And we would just use a punch, you know, punch method for every dollar that they spend. You could also buy these up for your kids and not send cash or credit card to use at the snack shack. So it's going to increase what we sell at the snack shack.
So that's cash?
How much is the items at the?
I'm sorry. That, that, that's the, they still got to pay cash for that?
Uh, no, they can charge that snack pass at the front gate, because we do accept credit cards at the front gate. Visa, MasterCard only.
Okay.
All right.
No, in MasterCard Express.
Hey, we took one at the rec center the other night, and I was like, man, so we can't.
How much are your snacks?
They, they are a dollar. A dollar for candy bars, a dollar for chips. There's everything in increments of ones, yeah. And everything is prepackaged. We don't serve food because we don't go through health department. We just hand it out. So it's bottled water, bottled sodas, chips, snacks, and some things.
So the drinks inside the rec center are $1.75, correct?
I don't know. I don't buy them. They're too expensive.
Well, that's what I'm saying. There's, there's a big difference between, you know, the prices inside the rec center and then at the Aquatic Center.
Yeah, but the rec center, we are in contract with Coca-Cola, so, you know, we don't have anything to do with the machines. We do get a little revenue off of the sales of that. But, you know, for this, for the pool, I want to try to make it as affordable as we can. And we're still allowing food to be brought in. If you've got a big family, that's the best way to go. And memberships, I'm changing my mind on this one. I said, membership sales for the Aquatic Center will be on hold until we have adequate staffing to operate for the whole season. We had a mother come in with three small children. She's a resident. And I said, we may not do memberships this year, because we may not be able to stay open the whole year. And she looked at me, and she said, you mean it would be $25 a time for me to come at $5 each? And I said, wow, you're making me think about this. So I think we should do the membership sales for the residents. Maybe not for the non-residents. Maybe just offer that as a perk for living in Saginaw and giving that. And if we have to close early, we'll deal with whatever we have to as far as prorating.
When you buy a membership, you can't always say, you're going to get this membership for, unless you're going to specify 52.5 weeks a year or whatever.
We've never specified a length of those memberships, and we've never had a problem. So if we stay open until mid-August, we're not going to have a problem with that. But I do think we try, we need to make this as affordable as we can for our residents. I'm not talking about sticking it to anybody else, but they're the ones that have waited two years for this pool to open. And we need to reward that. So I, I don't think we should go up on any of the rates.
So how much is it?
How much is a membership fee?
$5 for residents, $10 for, I'm talking about the entrance, and $10 non-resident. Not sure on the membership.
What was the membership pre-COVID?
She's not sure.
I'm not sure.
But you don't remember?
That was two years ago. It's been a long two years.
I want to know that.
Huh?
I said, I want to know that. When you get, when you dig it up.
But if we don't go up, they'll seem cheap after two years, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's keep going, Vicki. You're doing great.
Um, membership sales stays the same. And next page? No further increases?
What do you recommend the membership sale be?
I would just do what it was in 2019. We could reduce it if you wanted to, to make it, if they have to prove residency, and we're doing it for the residents, I'm good for even making it less to make these families, encourage them to use that pool every day. Because that's what it's going to be. So we could even look at going down on those.
Yeah, because they haven't had anything in two years.
I know.
Do you know what that price is for the membership?
I don't have that membership price. I'm sorry. I will get that, but I don't have it right now.
You get that to us later and let us know.
All right. No further increase. Current salaries for customer service in 2019, in 2020, I think. Anyway, it was $8 an hour. I'd like to see that 9 to 11. Again, I looked at 25 mile hour, 25 mile radius, because that's what I think is the most effective. For lifeguard, we did pay $9. I'd like to see that 12 to 14.
Can I ask, what is the customer service? Is that, they're going to work the snack thing, or?
They work the snack. They enter the front gate. They check the coolers for glass and alcohol and work on top of the slide. So they're working in the heat, too. They just don't need that training of a lifeguard. So lifeguard, $12 to $14 an hour. Head lifeguard, 15 to 17, and pool manager, $17 to $20 an hour is what I'd like to see. Did search within 25 miles. The job fair, we really do need to raise these prices. I have four lifeguards, and I have three customer service. And that's not enough to open the pool for one day.
How many lifeguards do you have to have running a day?
Uh, we had, we had 30 in 2018. 30 lifeguards and eight customer service.
And how many, how many do you work a day?
It, on, on the shifts, there's two shifts in a day. There's eight stations, pool manager. I would say we would have to have 15 for a day.
Per day?
Yeah.
They rotate in and out. After a certain amount of time, they rotate, they go off stand to kind of recover from the sun.
Yeah, and they're working in the Texas heat. So, you know, you've really got to, you know, keep them moving and keep them out of the sun.
Well, that's why I was wondering why we shouldn't raise the lifeguard a little bit, so they would be interested in coming.
We need to raise it. The lifeguard, I thought, I mean, I think the lifeguard's $15. Because we need to get the pool open, and if we're not being competitive, I say the lifeguard is 15. You can keep that head lifeguard at 17. And I'm not sure about the pool manager.
Well, I'd like to see, you know, the lifeguard with that salary range. If they're first-time lifeguard, we'll start them out at 12. And then if they've got experience, you know, 14.
You said you did the analysis.
Yes.
Right. So to me, all I need, for me, all I need to know from you is exactly what I have to pay these people to ensure that I've got lifeguards, so our citizens can swim in their pool.
What was the average you came up with? You got 25 miles.
12, for 25 miles, lifeguard, 1271 to 1527.
So what's you cut that in half and make it 13 or 14? Now they're starting it out, yeah.
I mean, 12 to 14 is good. 12 to 14 is reasonable. That's why she's proposing that.
What do you think for lifeguard?
12 to 14.
Lifeguard for 14.
12 to 14 is good. That sounds reasonable.
The manager, 17 to 20. The manager seventeen to twenty, um, was the radius?
This is for three months.
Can you tell me what the difference between the manager and Dave?
David?
Because I've read what you, what Dave was and I agree with all that.
I would like David to be the pool manager as well. I would like him to be CPO certified. So that means he can run the chemicals. I would like him to be over the pump room because it's my job right now and I'm at the rec center. But I don't want a bunch of sixteen, seventeen-year-olds dealing with what I deal. I've, I'm trained with a CPO certification, but they're not. And I can't teach them that. And I wouldn't want my daughter to work there.
Are we helping Dave get that certification or is he doing it on his own?
Yes. Yeah, I think we are helping Dave get the certification and he will be able to certify our lifeguards. So not only are you going to give them a raise, we're going to be able to advertise, we will train you in our pool. And not only will the guy training you be training you in our pool, he's going to be over you. He's going to know what to expect of you. He's going to set a new standard that we've never had at that pool. An adult there all the time. We've got a whole new staff of very young adults and that have never done this before at our pool.
So you've sold me on Dave. I just need to know how much you're going to have to pay Dave to get him in the pool.
Fifteen, what is it? Seventeen?
It's kind of a.
Seventeen point.
No, Dave, David's going to be, you know, CPO certified. He's going to be lifeguard certified. He's going to be your pool manager. He's going to be kind of taking care of the whole pool and this staff of young people keeping them safe. So.
Real quick comment.
Pardon me?
Quick comment on.
When he's off duty. Um, it would be, we would still have a head lifeguard. And if he had to leave, and he lives right across, um, he li, where did he say he lived? No, he lives right across.
It, it doesn't matter.
Okay, but he's close. So he's right, you know, he's going to be here.
Mayor and council, I'll, I'll just summarize this. Vicki's done a great job. Uh, Mr. Hunter is our best chance to open the pool for a very simple reason. We will hire him with your approval concurrence as a full-time, but temporary employee. Lock, stock and barrel. He's going to run the pool as Vicki mentioned. Uh, he will also take applicants off the street and certify them to be lifeguards. So we have proven in the current market, we cannot attract certified lifeguards. I, I don't want to set any expectation for anybody here watching or you that we can guarantee the pool is going to be open. I think we can guarantee a training opportunity for somebody who's qualified and hope we get applicants, take off the street and get them certified.
I just have one question about the full-time, part-time thing. Who's going to take care of the pool after, in September, October, November, December and all that and keep it up?
If, in September, if, if this ends in September and you said, if you said, thanks, David, thanks for giving us the best first year, we'll take it from here, then it comes back to me.
Okay.
And this is hard. This is, I've been brushing the pool. Jason's been helping me. We've been out there every day brushing that pool because that's part of what we have to do to keep the plaster under warranty. We have to do that right now.
What I'm asking is, is can you, is there not a way that you can maybe figure out a way that you can do like schoolteachers, spread his, his pay out over a twelve-month period and he won't be there all day? Or, I'm just asking because I don't know how this works, so.
Or maybe we could just fire him.
I mean, we, we have open positions for the rec.
Maybe we do it like this, like Vicki's just his first year and see how it goes. And if we want to expand, it's roll next year.
Well, I think, I think Hugh will prove his worth. And by September, when, when we look in August, the council will be able to look at and say, wow, this is the direction we need to go. We need an aquatic supervisor and during the off-season, he's still going to take care of the pool. But we can use him for events and for, for our busy season at the rec center. So it's not like he's going to sit there and twiddle his thumbs because I don't pay people to do nothing.
Keith, you have a comment?
Yes, with all, with all due respect to all of our pool managers that we've had before, we advertise every year for a pool manager. And it's our hope that we get an adult. I worked for, uh, another community where I, I managed three different pools. And we had a pool manager. He was actually an assistant principal at Bell High School. And he ran a tight ship and those, those kids, those lifeguards, staff, the public, they listened to him. Here, because we have to hi- hire the best possible person that we have that applied for that position. And we've had peers, managing peers, which is not as easy as, as it may sound or not sound. But it, having an adult in that position would be an outstanding addition to, to our program.
We all need to make it to where they want to do it and come back. That's what we need to do.
What's his confidence level that we can get the lifeguards needed to open the pool, May thirtieth?
Very high. If he's able to train and we're able to get these kids here, that's part of it. They have to drive over fifty miles to get certified. That's where all of the certification is. And it's a two-day thing that they have to drive there. So if we said, you know, that could be a reluctance for the people applying. And if we say, we can do this.
Price of gas.
So can we advertise this in the schools and everything and get this thing going so that we get our lifeguards? Can we advertise it in the schools and everything?
I think we need another job fair, just for the lifeguards.
I mean, some, get something in all these high schools with all these kids and get them off the street.
And get some excitement.
Tarrant County College as well.
And I would like to see with this pay increase, we're not taking the bottom of the barrel that nobody else wants. I'm not taking what N R H said no to. We're able to choose and by next year, we're going to be able to pick who we want. And that's what I'd like to see.
If we pass this today, what are you going to do to lock Mr. Hunter in?
Call him on the way home.
There you go.
So, so we'll get, we'll run it through, uh, the city attorney's office and get, I think it'd be an employment agreement by contract. Is that correct? Or will we hire him as a full-time?
If we hire him to be full-time for a timeframe, then he would just be like a regular employee and do the background and make sure he's good. And then we would offer him the job at that time.
Of course, we're asking him to do something that really doesn't fit in a lot of job descriptions. So she's going to have to kind of make our own job description for him. We're, we're cutting edge here.
And so what you're saying is David's going to be the pool manager. So what are you going to start him at?
Um, I don't know. Melanie's looking at what we're asking him to do and what city's pays because he's going to be doing a variety of jobs.
All right. So I think we've got guidance. I think the council is a hundred percent behind you. Like, everybody's good to go with this. We want to get the pool open, so go forth and make it happen, Vicki.
Do what you got to do. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for the details. We appreciate all the information too.
Appreciate it.
Remember that, Ray.
You're amazing, Vicki.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you guys. And thank you, Keith, as well.
Yes, thank you. Thank you too. H R.
All right. Item number twelve, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty-three budget workshop. Mayor and council, uh, it's, it's getting late, so we're going to go through this pretty quickly. Again, this is an introductory workshop. We talk about this every council meeting. Uh, it'll be a recurring theme for the next several months. The intent is to educate and inform you before we get into decision time in the summer. So I will, uh, each, uh, department head is going to go over some of the things that were in these slides. These were part of the packet, so you may have had a chance to review them. They're also out publicly. And with that, I'll, uh, give it over to Kim Quinn.
Thank you, mayor and city council. Um, I'll just briefly go over this. Um, we'll, as Gabe mentioned, we'll talk about it in, more in-depth as the summer, spring and summer go by. As Gabe's mentioned in multiple communications with you, um, that of a high priority will be compensation to make sure that we can retain as many of our employees as we can and attract, uh, attract new employees. We're, it's just a difficult job market and so that will be a high priority.
So is that, is that above the, um, that five hundred dollar thing we was talking about? Is that?
That, that's the last, we included that as the last slide. We'll get to that, the retention. So just to, to add some, uh, color, if you recall, in the fall, we had a discussion about future positions as we grow, open up new facilities. We, at some point in the future, the demand for services will be such that we need more people. I think everybody kind of acknowledges that. The reality is the labor market is so difficult that even if we had new budgeted positions, I couldn't reasonably commit to you that they could be filled. That may be the same for, you know, your place of employment. It is just tremendously difficult. I believe that we need to, uh, focus and recognize the employees that we have first, uh, and, and maintain their competitiveness. We also, as you may be aware, and in the next couple of months, we'll have better numbers. We're looking at health insurance, uh, cost increases that are going to be substantial. We may have to change plans. We may have to add, uh, past costs to employees. But we can't, they can't bear all of that. Otherwise, it's a net, uh, a pay cut. So these are all factors that are moving around that we've got to think about.
We also will have a tax rate impact on the debt side. This will be the year that we're going to sell twenty-three point seven million dollars for the construction of the library and senior center. We went over that plan. Uh, we talked about that. So we'll have better numbers to exactly what, um, how much of the tax rate will be increased once we start getting our values from TAD. We'll get our first set of values in April. Um, but we know that there'll be a significant increase on that, on the debt side. Uh, the original estimate.
Significant, you said?
The original estimate was about thirty-two dollars. So, oh, a year.
A year.
Um, and then the last thing that, um, we're going to have to deal with in administration is, um, our finance system, our ERP system. Our current provider, S T W, was bought out by OpenGov and by September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, S T W will no longer be available. We'll have to either convert to OpenGov or go with another provider. So that's something that we're going to have to start working on.
Have you started looking into that yet?
Have we?
Have you started looking into, into that?
Just briefly, just briefly. So those are, those are the general topics for administration. We'll move on to the other departments.
All right. So the police department has nine items on the budget list here. Uh, real quickly, on the first one is police vehicles. So with the chip shortage that we've experienced throughout, uh, this past year, our current vehicles, four, that we ordered for this current fiscal year, have not even been built yet. So we're still waiting on those. I have those on the list because we have three cars that should be due if we continue our replacement cycle for next year. Um, we could end up seeing all seven cars in one year because the cars we've ordered now may not even be delivered until November. So after this fiscal year, so, uh, the budgetary constraints that would take place there.
But the, those cars are already paid for or budgeted for?
They are not paid for. They are budgeted for. They are budgeted for. We don't pay for them until we receive them. And so, uh, yeah, that's, that's our anticipation for next year is possibly an increase of eleven percent overall. And that's not equipment. So we're looking at roughly fifty-eight.
I was going to say, so we're keeping the cars longer, so I'm just assuming then that our maintenance per month of keeping these cars longer is going to go up?
So we, we maintain cars in our fleet for ten years. And, uh, yeah, when they exit the fleet, they're sitting around a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand miles. Uh, maintenance is pretty heavy on them, mainly because of the railroad tracks. Railroad tracks are pretty hard on everything inside the car.
On one side.
On, on one end of town.
One end of town.
Yeah, I, I guess what I was asking is, there's nothing we can do about keeping them longer right now if the chips are still stuck in China. Uh, so.
We, we can keep them longer. Our cost will go up for maintenance.
That's what I was saying. So we'll calculate, have you all looked at what you think that might cost?
I don't have any of those numbers here in front of me. Uh, I can get with the garage and see what he's seeing on an average increase right now. Our newest units, uh, are actually costing us money as far as brakes. Apparently with some of the shortages that took place with supply, manufacturers went with a, a cheaper brake pad or rotor or something. But we're, you can hear us squealing, you know, ten miles out. So, and that's the brand-new cars. So. Also on your list is a Tarrant County, uh, college contract. This is a contract we entered into. Uh, this will be our third renewal for it. Uh, this is range services. We closed the city range due to, uh, residential development in and around our range. You know, we had to have a place to do our farms training. We approached Tarrant County, um, college, which they have a indoor range. Uh, we do pay, you know, every three years, the twenty-two thousand five hundred for a three-year contract. When I wrote this up, we didn't know what those costs would be. I have received an invoice from them, so there's no increase in cost for the next three years. So it's the twenty-two thousand five hundred still.
And that's every police officer, Saginaw police officers go in there for a range.
Yeah, that, that gives us, it's eleven or twelve range dates to get in and train. So our SWAT team trains. We go in and train and then, uh, anytime someone buys a personal rifle for carry-on patrol, it gives us a range date to go in and, and do that as well. But most of those dates are taken up by the SWAT team doing their, uh, every other month training. And then P D officers take up the rest of it. On the next slide, you have the RMS CAD. Uh, we started on this about two years ago. I brought that to your attention. Estimated the cost would probably be around a million, a million two. The numbers actually look a whole lot better now that we've actually talked to some folks and, and got some round numbers in. We had talked to Lake Worth about partnering with them with a, a product that's owned by Motorola. Uh, it used to be a Spillman product. It's, it's a CAD and RMS system. If we hosted through, uh, Lake Worth, our costs are sitting around three hundred and seventy-five thousand for basic setup and, and get operational with a forty thousand a year maintenance cost, which is a twelve-month cost. Really, the only downside to partnering with another agency is if next year they say, hey, you know what? We're going to go with a different system, uh, then we're out and looking for something new again. If we were to incorporate this system all on our own with our own servers and all, you're looking at about a half million dollars. Plus the forty thousand a year maintenance on that. That's us supplying servers so that, the servers are not in that cost. Uh, getting with our I T folks, they're telling me, uh, probably, you know, twenty-five thousand or so is what we're looking at servers. Servers will be ours. We own them. Uh, we wouldn't have to worry about anybody's. We don't have to mess with anybody else. Spillman also offers a package where they will provide the servers and all the, the equipment. And that's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we're, we're under the million-dollar range that we estimated that we'd be at. But that's kind of the ballpark of what we're looking at, depending on which route we go.
And if we go with our own servers, we have to realize we would have to hire an I T guy. There, there's no way.
It, it would be our recommendation that we hire a service, uh, to actually take care of that for us. Yes.
Yeah, it's a pretty big job.
Yes, yes. So can, is, can you, um, how do you feel about the Lake Worth? I mean, partnering with Lake Worth?
Uh, we've actually had pretty good relations with, with Lake Worth. I don't anticipate that they would up and move away from the system. But if the system didn't meet their needs with their growth, uh, that would be an option for them. There's nothing that indicates that to us in, in talking with them that, you know, they're, they're a willing partner. They're willing to partner with us on this to keep our costs down. They have the server capacity currently, uh, to bring us on board without any additional cost to them. There would be a cost sharing or maintenance sharing that we would pay with them. They do use an outside, uh, I T contractor. So I'm sure there would be some pass-on cost to us for that, uh, to help set up. And we'd still have the forty thousand a year maintenance cost that's to Spillman. That's a, a cost to the manufacturer, so.
So how old's their system? That'll explain a lot about their.
So Lake Worth implemented their system about a year and a half ago.
So they ain't going to know where it's been done.
Yeah, so they're, they're brand-new into it's, uh, at least that's my understanding. It may be two years, two and a half years. But I understand it's, it's been just here recently, so.
So the risk of them going to a new system, they just spent that many, that much money is pretty slim?
I, I would think it would be slim.
Yeah.
Most certainly.
One of the questions, one of the things I think to, I remembered from CPA class is that you are not able to customize the current system that you have now, um, like reports or the database and things like that. Would you have that flexibility with this new software?
So that's one of the benefits of this software is the analytics side of it is quite robust. Allows a lot of personalization for the agency. Uh, talking with Lake Worth, they, they've created their own reports. They're pulling information. They pull the same report twice. They get the same information twice. That's not what we get. We pull reports out of our current system and, you know, we get, if you pull it three times, you'll get three different numbers. Yeah, really no rhyme or reason as to why that would be, be in the same report. But, uh, Lake Worth does, uh, they talk highly of the system. Their dispatchers seem to like it. Their records clerks like it. Their officers seem to, to like it. It's a fairly user-friendly system. Once you get to, to know it, so there's going to be the learning curve going from one system to the other. But once they, uh, you completed that learning curve, everybody seems to be joining, at least to some degrees.
And would that cover all departments, uh, inside the P D?
I'm sorry?
Would that cover all your departments inside the P D, uh, records?
Yes, it's, it's a robust system. It would, it would take care of everything. RMS side would be our records management system, which would be our reporting. Has a jail module with it and things. And then it's got the CAD side for dispatch, to be able to dispatch and, and handle calls that way. Has got quite a few features that we don't have now that would require a third-party vendor, uh, in order to get those services with what we have now. And I said, be included in this one system.
You're a good salesman.
I don't know about that.
So, some information, I think this is, I know Motorola has about eighty to eighty-five percent of market share out there in public safety. So that tells you.
For, for radios, yes.
Yeah. And. And, I don't know for sure, but I thought, I'm trying to remember, this is, uh, P-25 compliant?
It would be, yes. Uh, P-25 really is, is radio interoperability, uh, so it doesn't play really into the CAD/RMS system, but, uh, this system is fully compatible with everything that's out there now as far as radio use and SIP screens and things. So, the next item on the list is a building security system. So, this is specifically our security cameras around the, the PD. Had a camera go out recently on one of the gates, so no one can see who's coming in the gate and dispatch, um, to verify if they need to raise it or not. Called the service vendor in to repair it. Cameras aren't available anymore. It's an antiquated analog system, it's not digital. Uh, they're recommending an upgrade to that, to a cloud-based Wi-Fi system. They were able to take two cameras, old cameras, rebuild a camera to put it back in place, and, uh, next camera goes out, it's just gonna be a, a black image on the screen after that, so...
Green.
Yeah, yeah. And so, trying to tie something back into building security, so, you know, we have cameras in the hallways, in the jail, Sally Port outside. Uh, we look at incorporating a few additional cameras as well, since the front PD parking lot is not currently, you know, surveilled, and it is used as a, uh, safe trading location for children, for parents that are separated, and also for Facebook sales.
Any idea how much this cost?
I'm sorry?
The ballpark figure on how much this was gonna cost?
So, no one will give me a ballpark cost without coming out and spending a couple hours with me. And we've, we just found this out prior to the request for this information, and so we've not been able to get anybody in to talk to us yet. I will come back in a couple of weeks. The, uh, next slide you have is, uh, body-worn camera and mobile video, so, we talked a little bit about this, uh, in a prior meeting. So, our L-three system is at end-of-life. Again, we have budgeted for server for it. Um, the downside that we have been told now is that the upgrade to the server is not backward compatible to our equipment, so we'd have to replace all the equipment in order to have the new server. They will not maintain the firmware on the server anymore, so, once it goes down, we lose all the video that's required by law, body-worn camera, video that's required by law for us to maintain, so, um, that's what this option is here. Now, this system, if we were to upgrade with Axon, Axon is the maker of Taser. Uh, they have a decent market share, if you will, of, of devices in law enforcement. They offer a package deal, it's a Taser, it's a body-worn camera, as a package unit price, um, keep the cost low. They offer the mobile videos, they also offer the, the recording software for our interview rooms. That cost right now, depending on how much we want them to do or not do, is looking at about three-hundred-and-seventy-five to four-hundred-thousand over a five-year period. It's an annual cost of about seventy-five to eighty-thousand. That is something that would need to be moved on relatively quick. I mean, something that, you know, I've already talked to, to Gabe about trying to implement pieces of this, this current year with the server fees and stuff that we'd already budgeted. The next you see is, uh, Tarrant County nine-one-one grants. The best I can tell, we're not losing anything yet, um, but they are reallocating these funds, so what we get through the Tarrant County nine-one-one grant is an eighteen-thousand-dollar grant that goes towards radio assistance, which is the fees we pay to the city of Fort Worth. And then we get a PSAP assistant, which is eighty-four-hundred, and that's to help replace things within the PSAP or dispatch center. And so, uh, they sent out a, a letter just advising us that, hey, there's gonna be some reallocations, we're gonna look at doing things a little differently, so, some programs could go away, some programs may not be funded. We don't know what that will entail at this point, but just wanted to make you aware of it that we may lose some of that funding. The next slide you'll have is gonna be our personnel slide. Uh, so as we spoke back, uh, towards the end of, of summer, actually, just a couple months ago, I guess, um, personnel for policing, we indicated that we had six positions that we really needed, uh, to maintain that, maintain our current call load. The school has indicated that they plan on being fully functional with their police department, uh, come, get in the school year.
So, they-
So, we'd get our three officers back from, from SROs potentially. There is some talk that they may need one or two of those still to help backfill their, their positions, until we really see where they're at, it's, it's hard to say. Currently, though, I do have four positions that are vacant. I have three that I anticipate will be vacant, uh, over the next month or two, and so, that'll have us with a vacancy of seven, um, just so you're aware of that. So, we, we have the vacancies, we're not finding any currently certified personnel, we're sending everybody to the academy, all applicants, a hundred percent of the applications.
Do we have any, any, do we have any in the academy now?
So, I have one that's in the academy that is unsponsored right now. Uh, the academy staff has called us and told us, "Hey, this is a really squared-away guy", so we're in talks with him, trying to get him to do an application, him processing through so we can actually sponsor him and, and be his agency. Um, other than that, we don't have anybody else in the academy, we don't have anybody set for the academy, uh...
I'm assuming other, other departments, other cities are doing the same thing we are?
I guess.
So, we're, we're in competition with them?
Well, I'll tell you, this, the one that's in the academy now, he had three other agencies coordinating. Now, most of those were, hey, when you get out, come talk to us. We were able to get in and say, "Hey, if you're willing to do a, an application with us now, we'll hire you like we've done the others as a PSO, uh, reduce pay, get you through the academy, and then you become our employee." And so, he's, he seems to be pretty favorable towards that, you know, to go to the academy, so...
On these, uh, three police officers that's currently working in the city, the city says, "Oh, have there's a, what's the chances of the, uh, school, uh, scarfing your three, uh, police officers?" I mean, if I was in their shape, I would, I would be trying my best to, uh, offer them-
Uh, I think there's been some of that. Uh, the, the chief for the schools, uh, police department, yeah, he's from Fort Worth, previously from Fort Worth, so I think he has a lot of Fort Worth guys that are preparing for retirement and looking at this as being a, kind of a side gig after retirement. Um, I have one that may entertain that. The other two have indicated that, yeah, they're gonna stay with us, they don't have any desire to work for the school. And even the third one hasn't expressed any real desire to go work for them, but I, I think he, just from what I'm seeing on the outside, might be entertaining that, so...
Yeah, okay.
The other side of personnel, uh, was dispatch, so we re-approved the two positions. Uh, the good news is, I hired one dispatcher that started today. She is completely inexperienced, but starting the training program. Uh, we have been approached by dispatcher in another city that lives here in town, is looking to come to work for us, so we fast-tracked her as well, trying to get her hired in. Um, and then I have a third dispatcher that is completely inexperienced as well, but is on our list, ranked number two, so we are moving forward with trying to hire her as well.
So, you have two inexperienced and one experienced potentials?
Yes. Uh, the, the hardship there is the two inexperienced, uh, you're looking at five months before they're standalone, going through the training program, so they'll, they'll be a while out. And a pretty good strain on our staff to train them, you having just the, the four full-time dispatchers, so trying to rotate these girls to, and get them, get them trained up, but, uh, really positive news there. Uh, what you see on, on the slide here is a request for the eighth dispatcher, which would give us two on console at any given time. Um, we kinda have an idea with this position, if it were granted, is to make it kind of a dispatch slash fill-in records slash crime victims liaison. Um, the position specifically, we have somebody in mind for, uh, she was one of our dispatchers that currently works part-time. She's in an intern program now for victim's assistance, uh, type of work, to get her degree in. Um, our victim's assistance coordinator right now is a volunteer. Uh, his hours have slowly been, been dropping off, uh, the last year or so, so I would imagine what we'll see is, is him probably doing even less time in the future and, and possibly even stop and volunteer altogether. He's been with us for a long time, but a great, great asset, but I think it's just getting to the point where he may be ready to be, be home, and if we could have somebody that's already trained in this and, and take over that role, so, that's kind of that eighth dispatch position. The last thing that I have on the slide is a metallics system, so this is the fingerprint system that's in the jail. Every person that gets arrested, this is how we fingerprint them, it runs them through the national database, so we can validate who they are. If they tell me I'm Jimmy Smith and doesn't have any ID, um, run his fingerprints, I can find out who he is. This same system also submits the fingerprints, uh, at the county and state level, so that the case files are already ready to go, we call it TRNs. Uh, so the TRNs are already submitted through the system as part of the, the case. We'll get a call from the DA's office if we fail to follow a case in a timely manner, saying, "Hey, you got this TRN out here, need to do something with the case." So, that's kinda how that system works. We obtained this system on a grant years ago, uh, Kate Granger, I think, was the one who allocated those funds through the state for the grant, um, but it has also entered its end-of-life phase, and so, the upgrades to it are roughly fourteen-thousand dollars to get to where we are today, and if we wanted to add any, uh, functionality to it, then it would be the increase up to twenty-three thousand. There's a couple of different modules you can add to it. Uh, we don't currently anticipate adding any modules, it'd be the fourteen-thousand, uh, but again, as we start talking to the vendor about what those actual modules are, and get a better idea of that recommendation they change.
Is that yearly or a one-time cost?
Those are one-time costs. We own the machines, it'd be a upgrade until the next upgrades due, so... There is a ma- there is a annual maintenance on this as well, that runs about forty-eight-hundred that we budget currently and pay every year, so, that's an ongoing cost as well that's outside of this.
What's usually the life expectancy of these systems?
So, the life scan, uh, it's actually been pretty good. I think it's going on seven or eight years. Uh, since it's used in the jail just for arrestees, I mean, it's not like it's used twenty-four-seven or any kind of great, uh, burden placed on it, but, it has some delicate components, such as the printers and the scanners that, that are replaced more often as part of that maintenance agreement. Uh, but the, the hardware and firmware aspect of this, it, it doesn't change just a whole lot, and so, they maintain it pretty, pretty simply. It's everything the police department has, so...
Is that a self-contained item, or is it hooked to Wi-Fi and stuff, where you'd have to, say, upgrade an OS every time?
So, it is a standalone item, it does have internet access, hard cable access, uh, it's in a ruggedized cabinet, so an inmate can't go berserk and tear everything up, uh, that type of deal, but, it is hardwired into the internet, so it can transfer its data back and forth to the state.
Mayor and Council, I'll be extremely brief, our slide's meant to be self-explanatory. First item's a continuation of a request that began in two thousand and fifteen. It's where a shift firefighter'd get us closer to a recommended staffing standard. Uh, since two thousand and fifteen, we've added a shift firefighter to two shifts. We have one shift that's working shorter than the other three, that, that would solve that problem. We have a fire engine that's, uh, in desperate need of replacement. Our life, uh, expected, it's at its end-of-life, we're using a twenty-year lifespan, most departments our size and our workload are doing that at fifteen years. Proud to say we can extend that to twenty years. We have one that's at the, it's ended life, it's a twenty-four-year, uh, twenty-four-month turnaround now, so it's imperative that we would order that thing this year in order to get it, uh, when we need it. The one we have now is, is becoming very unreliable, it's our single reserve for both fire stations, so it's something that we desperately need to replace. Next one is our rescue tools. Most of the equipment in the fire service has a, a life cycle, most of those run in ten and twenty-year increments. Our rescue tools are twenty years, they're two-thousand-one models, so we're a little bit beyond twenty years. We're seeking to replace two sets of those, and those are our primary tools on our two primary apparatus. Records management system, there's been a lot in the fire service records management, cannibalization of all the companies, and in doing so, they're raising the prices extremely high, uh, so we're having to select a different records management company than what we currently use. Uh, we've tried to find one, uh, that meets our economy and can still meet our needs, and that's what this reflects. We're gonna have to change company's, uh, Station Two security system. In the previous couple of years, we've been able to extend our rear fence around the fire station to add that, the security for our staff in the actual facility. The last component of that is adding the gate to the front part of that, an entrance gate, that's what this request is for. I'll answer any questions that you have.
If I order a fire truck today, do I have to pay for it today, or can I pay for it in twelve months, twenty-four months? How does that work?
All, all kinds of payment options. They make it really attractive to pay for it upfront, there's some substantial savings. We've taken advantage of those in the past, somewhere close to forty-thousand dollars if you pay it upfront, but there is all kinds of payment terms for, uh, fire apparatus.
And what'd you say? What'd you say?
To me, it would be a fair deal to pay the, you know, the discount upfront instead of paying, I don't wanna pay interest on any of my money.
That, that nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar cost is at the higher end, they're currently experiencing about a fourteen percent increase, much like everything else, the cost is kind of a shot in the dark, so I'm included the maximum, or hopefully be, uh, below that, but I don't wanna come back and have to ask for more money at some point. I wanna set the expectation where it needs to be. Well, at the point of its life now, it would be very minimal. We've used it to the extreme.
Thank you. Hello, Mary.
Mine's pretty short. Um, the first part is staffing, uh, this is the, um, first part of the multi-year plan that I showed y'all last fall, um, to get us up to full staff for the new building. Um, so, these are the positions that, that, um, I've identified for this year, uh, that these are people that we can use now in our current building, but will get us to where we need to be, um, when we move. So, that's, uh, two full-time and one part-time, and these, um, I just wanna say, i- in the library, we're not having as much trouble hiring people as other departments. You know, you can make whatever, um, you know, draw whatever conclusions you want to, but, uh, the, um, people wanna work in the library, you know? So, I don't, I don't feel like, uh, we would have a problem filling these positions, and two of them are, um, positions that I would, uh, promote current staff into, so, um, so that's, that's the staffing side, um, and then the other piece is technology. Um, in order to, again, get ready for our move, um, we need to, uh, move to an RFID tag system on all our items. Um, that is, uh, I don't wanna take a lot of time to explain it, but, um, basically, it's a, it's a security tag that's inside of each book or movie or whatever, um, it allows that to work with, uh, the new book drop that we'll have in the new building, uh, where you just actually feed your book in and it checks it in right then. You don't have to have a person to do it, it does it automatically. Um, it also works with self-checkout stations, with inventory, it's a, uh, it's a personnel saver, and it just kinda brings the library up to date technologically, so, any questions?
So, was that part of, was that, um, this new RFID tagging, was that built into the budget for the new building?
The tags are not. Some of the technology may be, just depending on how the budget goes, um, as far as like, uh, the pieces that are built into the building, like the book drop. Um, but we're still, you know, we're still working with the, uh, different consultants-
And I guess we don't need to know the salaries, 'cause you already got people in mind, so I guess, money is not an issue with these positions.
Well, I mean, these, these would be new positions, so, um, we will have numbers for you later on, but, yeah.
And she'd never ask for anything.
I know, that's what I was like-
Except for a building.
It's the new building. She says-
So, ju- just so, I'm, but, on the RFID, the system is included in the new building, it's the tags, it's not, and tags are actually very cheap, right?
The, uh-
Yeah, there's, there's a, a technology budget included in the build project, however, an RF, there's, so there's nothing really prescribed yet exactly for that, so we'd have to see what other technology was necessary before we could fund it.
But it's likely that that budget would go to the actual equipment that reads the tags, not the tags themselves.
The tags themselves are relatively cheap.
They are per item, but if you think about how many items we have over there, you know, so it does add up, and I don't have a cost for that yet, but that's something we'll be looking into, in the future.
And I do like your logo, too. That's really cool.
Hey, logo. Oh, the logo, it's beautiful.
Isn't that awesome?
I didn't see it, I did, I was looking at another-
Alright, Keith?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, in essence of time, I will speed through this, but try and be as efficient as I can. Uh, the first one is not an item that we'll be asking for in budget, however, it is something that I highly, highly suggest you take, you consider for the future. It needs to be on our radar, is a facility, a new facility for this, um, for animal services. The facility we have now was built in two thousand and six, when we had a population of thirteen thousand. We currently have twenty-four thousand one hundred and fifty people in Saginaw, and we're growing. We're at capacity at all times. And when we are at a capacity and above capacity, we have to put animals in temporary portable cages and store them in the hallways because we have no place for them. It's something I highly consider that you do is to stop by, take, take a good two hours of your day, find a good day to come, to go to Animal Services. Right over there is our Animal Services manager, Jose Wieland, and he's the best there is, let me tell you. He's outstanding and he's really turned that facility around to what it is now. And it's a, it's a remarkable job what he's done. But I highly suggest you spend a good two hours and just let him take you on a tour of that facility so you can see what we have. First, you got to find it because it's hidden. It's in a unique spot. We talked earlier about the trap and release program. It's something that we're going to look at. Quickly tell you, going over this very quickly, is that anything can be done, but it takes money, which we don't have. It takes staff, which we don't have enough of, and it takes a facility, which we don't have, that's large enough to be able to do that. But it's something we'll bring to you at a later time in a work session. Any questions on animal services? Continuing animal services, these are some things, since you have this, I believe this in your packet, you can see some things that we're looking at that we've got to take care of, such as replacements of our body cameras. They're outdated. They don't make the parts. So if they break down, we're kind of out of luck. Radio system, our hand-me-down radios that we got from police department a couple of years ago, I believe. Part-time staff increased. They're all budgeted at about twenty-five hours, which gives us not much flexibility since we only have, I think, two part-time staff. Bringing them up to twenty-nine hours. Overtime hours, because we're understa, we have about the same number of staff that we've had for about ten, almost fifteen years. And as our city continues to grow, there's more workload on our staff and then overtime comes into play. There's a few other things in there that are important, such as the H VAC system. Our H VAC system, I don't know if it's an original, but it's pretty dang close, which was from two thousand and six, and it does not sufficiently work for our facility. Last thing I'll mention real quickly on animal services is our dog exercise yard. Jose and I were able to go on a tour of a facility in kind of, I think it was the Soto, Cedar Hill area. And a lot of facilities are going to this to where they're replacing their grass with AstroTurf. Concrete base, AstroTurf, that kind of dates me. I don't even think they make AstroTurf anymore, but you kind of get, you get the point. And what the purpose of it is, is that when you, when you go to Animal Services and you take your two-hour tour, Jose will show you our dog run yard. And you'll see that it's kind of, it's in a drainage area, and you'll see the bumps and the holes where it catches water. What that does and what that mud and that dirt does is it holds and captures disease that we can't get rid of. The AstroTurf, because it's sloped, it has a drainage system, we can hose it off, we can more or less bleach it, clean it every day, as opposed to right now, it's just a mud pit after rains. It's something we can't, it's, it's very, very difficult to take care of and it's, it's a, it allows for disease to be spread. Any questions?
I have a question for you, Keith.
Sure.
I know that we offer some services over to Blue Mound as far as capturing animals and housing them over in Saginaw. Have we ever approached Blue Mound about them paying for an employee for Saginaw in exchange for the services that we offer?
They do pay us, and I believe the amount that they pay us is about fifteen hundred dollars a year, which is nothing. But that's all that they could afford whenever, when we took over Blue Mound, they were paying a company out of, I think, Hazlet or Roanoke, somewhere over there in that general area that was taking care of it. And that's what they paid him. So that's, that's all that they could afford to pay us.
Okay.
I like your idea.
We can't, you know, you can't tell me no if I don't ask, so.
That's right. Community services, I'm going to skip over this, yay, save a little time. Ms. Vicki talked a little bit about animals or about aquatics, so skip over that. Senior Center, this is something that we're looking, that is desperately needed. We, we moved to our new facility, or our new temporary facility at the rec center. We went from eighteen hundred square feet. And while I say that it's twenty-seven hundred square feet is what they've gone to, it's actually a lot more than that. The twenty-seven hundred square feet is where you, when you walk into what's known as the senior center now, that's where, that's the senior center. But they also use the other classrooms, which is another, what, twenty-three hundred square feet. They have the ability to use the fitness room, of course, obviously, the restrooms and the kitchen, which is about double the size of the kitchen they had before. So doing that, what, it kind of surprised me in a way, but I'm glad that, it's kind of a problem, but it's a good problem in that we have more people coming to this senior center where it is now at the rec center than we had at the previous one. There's so many more benefits because they have so much more room that they have. They have a larger kitchen. They have much more restrooms, wide open stalls. They have much access to the fitness room that's right there. And I'll say, one of the most important things is parking, because if you've ever tried to park behind the old senior center, I challenge you to do it now when there's no cars there. And then imagine when it's lined up with cars on both sides. It's, it's kind of a, it's a Tetris thing trying to get yourself in there, in and out. There's plenty of A D A parking, there's plenty of parking, and there's lots of space. Any questions, senior center?
Have we thought about seeing if Dave wants this, to make his full-time job, part of the senior staff, and then the summer he worked the pool?
Sure.
I'm just saying, I mean, that way he can get on full-time and, you know, then we'll have this person, because the seniors need somebody. So, I don't know, it was just a thought, I don't know.
Unfortunately, I'm not allowed to vote, but you have my vote. That's a good idea. Any more questions? Last is economic development. One of the things I'm asking for in this, what we'll be asking for is a, a full-time, it's a multipurpose role, we're in Saginaw, we're short, we're low-staffed. Everyone and every department, Rick has told you before that he's a multitasker, I'm a multitasker. He and I both do the equivalent of about three or four department heads in any other city. So we understand multitasking, and all of our staff at the rec center are also multitaskers. What this position would be, would be a multitasker, where it would be managing the food truck park, which is a full-time job everywhere else, and also be an assistant to economic development. When I took over economic development two years ago, I still kept everything I was doing before, all the other department head level jobs and responsibilities. I took over a position that was a department head who had an intern. I don't have an intern. I just took over that person's job. So I'm asking for this position to be an assistant for that, plus managing the food truck park. Any questions?
All right, I guess we come to my departments. Building permit, we added a, an inspector this past year. That inspector's going through certifications, et cetera, getting licenses, and now he doubles up on a vehicle. So we want to purchase an additional vehicle for him to have his own vehicle. We are going with a mid-size pickup for inspections instead of the full-size four-wheel drives that we'd have in public works and water departments. You're all familiar, been briefed many times on the rental inspection program. You've toured that, you've rode along on that program, you see the manpower required. We have one of those positions that's filled with an intern presently. The intern is going away, but that needs to be backfilled with a permanent position. I'm not sure that one position is enough. I'm sure Larry may, may reevaluate that. We have a, the code enforcement manager is, is going to reduce hours. And so she will retire at some point, Lisa Newsom. So, you know, we want to probably look at the entire organization there to see what kind of staffing levels are appropriate. For the water and wastewater, I'm sorry, we're in public services. This was deferred maintenance. Last year, we had a request to replace this backhoe. The backhoe is on Band-Aids, and last week it broke down. It was in our parking lot for about two days, actually broke down on the job. So we, we, we just can't maintain it anymore. So we want to replace that at a hundred and sixty-one thousand.
Is that brand-new? That price?
That's brand-new, yes.
It better be for that price.
Maybe, maybe more on Gold Rush.
They don't, they don't, they don't give equipment like this away.
That's, I didn't know that was.
If you like that price, the next one you'll love.
But could we get it, though? Is it on back order? How does that work?
You know, we, to be honest with you, I mean, we, we got the request a couple of weeks ago, I guess, to do these one-time deals. And our fleet manager, Jeff, he couldn't find anybody that would give him a price, a bid. I mean, because, you know, it's just, it's like everything else, it's just you can't find equipment or you can't find anything, really.
You know, if you'd have talked to me a month ago, Gabe, I'd have sold you one of these, a dump truck, and a trailer to go with it.
You made the deal, wouldn't you?
Yeah, that's right. I'd have made the deal.
Okay.
So the attorney may have something to say about that.
All right, keep going, Rick.
And then last is the water and wastewater department. We have a back truck. That's a big number replacement, about six hundred and three thousand dollars. The back truck, if you're not familiar with that piece of equipment, is a versatile multitask equipment.
Is this the one that sucks all the stuff, just right out of the ground?
It, that vacuum, that little nozzle that you see on the boom there at the end of it, it can pick up boulders. And so it, it's useful for cleaning out manholes, inlets, pipes, et cetera. One of the other things that this, the truck can do is the hose there, you can see, could be high-pressure hose to unlock or unblock blockages and sanitary sewers, et cetera. And then also, one of the really useful parts of this tool is that if you have a utility clearance, you have multiple utilities in the ground, this can excavate in a non-destructive manner. So it uses a water jet to loosen the material and then the vacuum to suck it out. And so you expose those utilities in a non-destructive way, so.
That's for demonstration.
Yeah.
I had a demonstration this weekend.
Okay, and if you want to volunteer, we'll use that vacuum, just pick you up and you can see what kind of power it has, so.
And it cleans up the street when they finish doing all the work.
So, anyway, that concludes.
Rick, when's the last time we bought one of these? I know we bought, this is like.
You know, they, they live in a harsh environment, and so, you know, they have about a five-year life. This one has about a five, has a five-year life to it.
Seems like we just bought one, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Mayor, we'll, we'll wrap up. And again, this is, the intent is to introduce you to these topics that we'll talk about in detail in future months. Would like you to consider, given current year, one-time retention payment to employees. So what we're proposing is five hundred for all full-time employees with at least one year of service, two hundred and fifty for all part-time employees. So we're in a situation where we really can't fill vacancies. It's likely not going to improve in the near future, which is why we're, we're recommending that we, we don't look at adding any positions. Keith did some research. I know it's late, we're not going to talk much, but this is pretty common for some of our local employers in the area. So definitely would ask for that consideration.
Our counsel, any questions?
So this had nothing, so when we was looking at the five percent, when were we looking at, that five percent earlier? This is.
Yeah, so, so what I would propose, fits the council's pleasure, to offer these amounts as a one-time payment. And then we look at five percent effective October first. I know it's a big number, but I sent some articles about inflation as well as competition in the market. You know, we're competing with everybody, Vicki mentioned it, within a twenty-five, thirty-mile radius. So it's a difficult hiring environment.
Can you send us, can you send us that number of what that might look like?
Of?
Annually for that five percent across the board?
Sure, yep.
A rough estimate is about six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That's the salary plus social security plus T M R S.
Everything, yeah. Ongoing. Our counsel, any other questions? Any other budget questions? So this is, this is like step one of our budget process, so we're just getting started. So appreciate the information, appreciate department heads, all the presentations, good, good background information for us.
So on this one-time payment, is that something we need to take action on sooner?
So I wanted to throw it out there. Y'all can think about it. I honestly think it's money well spent, and the sooner the better. We can bring that to you in April for action.
Major budget would be in April, right?
Yeah.
We can consider it major budget time?
Yep.
We make revisions at that point, that would be appropriate time to consider, so.
Did that six hundred thousand, that annual increase, did that have anything to do with the health care? No.
That just stands.
And that's just a ballpark. I reserve the right for that number to change.
No, 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 I understand that.
A rough estimate, it's for every percent, it's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So that would include the five percent salary plus the benefits that increase when the salary increases.
Okay. And so are you guys looking into the, the whole health care, switching plans or whatever?
We have a employee committee and then our, our benefits broker. We'll have better information in May.
Thank you.
May, June timeframe.
All right, so at nine twenty-five, we adjourn from regular session. We're going to executive session pursuant to Texas government code five five one dot oh seven two, deliberation regarding real property. We will return to adjourn. We will return to adjourn.